Good evening. Code order, I call this regular meeting to order at 3:34 PM. I said 6:34. Pledge of allegiance led by council member Chan.
Please rise, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart and say the words with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, Roko, please.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
We will now have some announcement from our clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestream on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to receive city council agendas, please sign up on the city's website.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the agenda order? I hear none. So the agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentations, we have no presentations tonight. The next item is public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at the beginning of each item you wish to comment on.
Yes, go ahead.
The first comment is from Benjamin Tran.
Good evening, San Gabriel City Council members. My name is Benjamin Tran. My family has been residents of San Gabriel for over thirty years. I attended Washington Elementary, Jefferson Middle School, and Gabalino High School. Much of the work I do today has genuinely been inspired by my time in the programs like Youth in Government. I am asking today that the San Gabriel City Council add to a future agenda and support a resolution to call for a ceasefire in the Gaza Strip. As a son... As a son of a refugee, I and many of my peers who grew up in San Gabriel know too well the atrocities of war and how even now our communities still heal from those scars. The United States should not be fueling conflicts that create more refugees and more pain. Yet, news report after news report have shed light to the suffering being inflicted to the Palestinian people because of this conflict. And with the deaths of the members from the World Central Kitchen, now we have seen deaths of our fellow Americans and members of the international community. I ask for San Gabriel to honor the history of the communities living here in this city by joining neighboring communities such as Ahambra, Almonte, and La Puente in supporting a ceasefire resolution. Thank you so much.
Our next comment is from Elias.
My name is Elias, and I'm here requesting that the San Gabriel City Council Board add and support a ceasefire in Palestine. City of Pasadena, Pomona, Almonte, La Puente, Monobello, and Ahambra have already discovered a resolution and put into action on their agenda to discuss this. So I really don't see why San Gabriel wouldn't follow in suit, clearly because it's the constituents, the voice of the people, are requesting it. Yeah, it's our civic responsibility to not support genocide, considering San Gabriel City with a mission, already kind of a bad rap sheet when it comes to genocide and supporting genocide. So let's make a change, free Palestine.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from George Herrera Avila.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable Consul, City Manager, my name is Jorge Herrera, former Commissioner in the here Commission. And through the Commission, we created a lot of change, positive change here in the city of San Gabriel with support of our city manager, which always was present, and all the Commissioners that were in-house helping and supporting. One of the things and some of the things that we worked on through the here Commission was the Mental Health Wellness Fair, which was a huge success.
Excuse me, Mr. Herrera, if you don't mind, let's start with something because your item is actually on our agenda. So we will let you do it later. Do you mind?
Sure.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from Peter Deng.
Distinguished Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and all the council members. My name is Peter Deng, I'm the resident of San Gabriel. Today I'm speaking on behalf of the Medical Center on the second floor at 123 East Wally Boulevard, San Gabriel, California, the Zico 91776. This Medical Center has a lot of senior peoples, disabled persons. And because of the rule or regulations by the city for the rule in the city for over ten years, they do not allow those peoples to access to the second, the first floor. So this Medical Center has no right to set up the Medical Center on the first floor. And those senior people, disabled people, there's some of the clients, even they're eighty years old, ninety years old, it's very hard for them to access to the second floor. So we appealed this council meeting that you can change the law from the second floor to the first floor for the Medical Center. Otherwise, the old law or regulation violates the Constitution Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution, the Fourth Amendment and the Fifth Amendment. And also violates the equal rights and equal protection. Thank you so much, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from Valerie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Consul, City Manager. My name is Valerie Munoz from the city of La Puente, council member for the city. But I'm also your representative on the Water Quality Authority. It's been several months that I've been here just to kind of give you a general update, but also say hello and also provide an invitation to the Water Quality Authority to anyone who's interested in touring our facilities and to see exactly what we do on the water agency. Again, we don't sell water, we're not in the water business. The whole focus of our agency is to secure federal and state funding to keep our water clean in the San Gabriel Valley, including for your residents here in San Gabriel. So as part of the effort for our gonwater cleanup, contamination is prevented by spreading throughout the water basin. And today, we secure millions of dollars on federal funding just to ensure that our ratepayers aren't going to see the increases for those cleanup efforts from the responsible parties. So I just wanted to say hello, I know you have a pretty tight agenda, and let you know that I'm still here representing the San Gabriel Valley. And if there's any questions, please reach out, be more than happy to support a tour or answer any questions, or also provide a general update at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no other public comments.
Okay, so next item, please.
Next item is item four, Consent Calendar. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received any requests from the public to pull any items, however, staff requests that item 4A2 be approved as amended with the removal of a partial sentence and correction of a typographical error.
Would any council member would like to pull an item from separate discussion? No? So do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, I'll second. Moved by Vice Mayor Menchaca and seconded by Councilmember Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you, next item, please.
Our next item is public hearing. Item A, Ordinance Number 706, Amendment to Update the San Gabriel Municipal Code Relating to New State Law for Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units, ZTA 201776.
...of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda, but are within subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at the beginning of each item you wish to comment on.
Yes, go ahead.
The first comment is from Benjamin Tran.
Good evening, San Gabriel City Council members. My name is Benjamin Tran. My family has been residents of San Gabriel for over thirty years. I attended Washington Elementary, Jefferson Middle School, and Gabalino High School. Much of the work I do today has genuinely been inspired by my time in the programs like Youth in Government. I am asking today that the San Gabriel City Council add to a future agenda and support a resolution to call for a ceasefire in the Gaza Strip. As a son... As a son of a refugee, I and many of my peers who grew up in San Gabriel know too well the atrocities of war and how even now our communities still heal from those scars. The United States should not be fueling conflicts that create more refugees and more pain. Yet, news report after news report have shed light to the suffering being inflicted to the Palestinian people because of this conflict. And with the deaths of the members from the World Central Kitchen, now we have seen deaths of our fellow Americans and members of the international community. I ask for San Gabriel to honor the history of the communities living here in this city by joining neighboring communities such as Ahambra, El Monte, and La Puente in supporting a ceasefire resolution. Thank you so much.
Our next comment is from Elias.
My name is Elias, and I'm here requesting that the San Gabriel City Council Board add and support a ceasefire in Palestine. City of Pasadena, Pomona, El Monte, La Puente, Monobello, and Ahambra have already discovered a resolution and put into action on their agenda to discuss this, so I really don't see why San Gabriel wouldn't follow in suit, clearly because it's the constituents, the voice of the people requesting it. Yeah, it's our civic responsibility to not support genocide, considering San Gabriel City with a mission, already kind of a bad rap sheet when it comes to genocide and supporting genocide, so let's make a change. Free Palestine.
Our next comment is from George Herrera Avila.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable Consul, City Manager, my name is Jorge Herrera, former Commissioner, former Commissioner in the Here Commission, and through the Commission, we created a lot of change, positive change here in the city of San Gabriel with support of our city manager, which always was present, and all the Commissioners that were in-house helping and supporting. One of the things and some of the things that we worked on through the Here Commission was the Mental Health Wellness Fair, which was a huge success. Another thing that I...
Excuse me, Mr. Herrera, if you don't mind, let's start with something because your item is actually on our agenda, so we will let you do it later. Do you mind?
Sure.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from Peter Deng.
Distinguished Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and all the Council members. My name is Peter Deng. I'm the resident of San Gabriel. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Medical Center on the second floor at 123 East Wally Boulevard, San Gabriel, California, the Zico 91776. This medical center has a lot of senior peoples, disabled persons, and because of the rule or regulations by the city for the rule in the city for over ten years, they do not allow those peoples to access to the second, the first floor. So, this medical center has no right to set up the medical center on the first floor, and those senior people, disabled people, there's some of the client, even they're eighty years old, ninety years old, it's very hard for them to access to the second floor. So, we appealed this council meeting that you can change the law from the second floor to the first floor for the medical center. Otherwise, the old law or regulation violate the Constitution Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution, the Fourth Amendment and the Fifth Amendment, and also violate the equal rights and the equal protection. Thank you so much. Thank you for your attention.
Our next comment is from Valerie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council. I'm Valerie Munoz from the City of La Puente, Council Member for the city, but I'm also your representative on the Water Quality Authority. It's been a few, several months that I've been here just to kind of give you a general update, but also say hello, and also provide an invitation to the Water Quality Authority to anyone who's interested in touring our facilities and to see exactly what we do on the Water Agency. Again, we don't sell water. We're not in the water business. The whole focus of our agency is to secure federal and state funding to keep our water clean in the San Gabriel Valley, including for your residents here in San Gabriel. So, as part of the effort for our gone water cleanup, contamination is prevented by spreading throughout the water basin, and today we secure millions of dollars on federal funding just to ensure that our ratepayers aren't going to see the increases for those cleanup efforts from the responsible parties. So, I just wanted to say hello. I know you have a pretty tight agenda and let you know that I'm still here representing the San Gabriel Valley, and if there's any questions, please reach out. Be more than happy to support a tour or answer any questions or also provide a general update at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no other public comments.
So, next item, please.
Next item is Item Four, Consent Calendar. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public request separate discussion. We have not received any requests from the public to pull any items. However, staff requests that Item 4A2 be approved as amended with the removal of a partial sentence and correction of a typographical error.
Would any Councilmember would like to pull an item from separate discussion? No? So, do I have motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Menchaca and second by Councilmember Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Our next item is Public Hearing. Item A, Ordinance Number 706, Amendment to Update the San Gabriel Municipal Code Relating to New State Law for Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units, ZTA 24-001, Introduction and First Reading. If you wish to comment on this item, please turn in your speaker card to the clerk now.
So, now I now open the public hearing. Associate Planner, Mullen Servantes, will make the step presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Menchaca, and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a citywide zone text amendment to update the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to implement the requirements of Senate Bill 897 and Assembly Bill 2221. Each of the two bills became effective on January 1st, 2023, with the goal of further encouraging the construction of ADUs and junior ADUs. On this slide, you'll see a brief overview of Senate Bill 897, which allows for increased heights for ADUs depending on certain location requirements, a new parking exception, some procedural changes, and a few updates to provide further clarification on requirements for fire sprinklers and junior ADUs. Similarly, Assembly Bill 2221 establishes new prohibitions on front yard setbacks and requires applicants to be provided with a full set of comments with a list of deficient items when an ADU is denied or determined to be incomplete. These next few slides go into more detail regarding the specific language that is being amended in the code. The first change applies to demolition permits for garages that are being replaced with an ADU. Currently, the San Gabriel Municipal Code is silent on the requirement for a demolition permit. However, new legislation requires a demolition permit to be reviewed and issued when a detached garage is being replaced with an ADU. The demolition shall not require written notice or the posting of a placard unless the property is located within an architecturally and historically significant district. New legislation also provides further clarification on when fire sprinklers are required for ADUs. The current code requires an ADU to be fire sprinkled when the existing home has fire sprinklers or if a proposed new home requires fire sprinklers. The amended code language clarifies that the construction of an ADU shall not require or does not trigger the installation of fire sprinklers in the existing primary dwelling unit. The next amendment applies to front yard setbacks. The current requirement is for a new detached ADUs to be located behind the rear face of the primary unit or in the rear yard. New legislation prohibits cities from establishing any front yard setbacks that do not permit the construction of at least an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU. The proposed amendment is for ADUs to meet the required front yard setback as dictated by each zone in which ADUs are allowed unless the applicant can demonstrate that the enforcement of the front yard setback on the subject property prohibits the creation of at least an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU. Another significant change is with regard to the allowable height for ADUs. Under the current code, the maximum height for an ADU is sixteen feet, measured from the lowest adjoining grade to the highest point of the structure. New legislation allows for taller ADUs subject to certain location requirements. On a lot that is located within one-half-mile walking distance from a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor, an ADU can be built up to eighteen feet in height with an additional two-foot allowance to accommodate a steep roof pitch for an ADU to match the roof pitch of an existing home. This would allow for a maximum height of twenty feet in areas near major transit stops or high-quality transit corridors. A later slide explains how each of these are defined. New state law also allows ADUs to be up to eighteen feet in height on lots with an existing or proposed multifamily or multi-story dwelling. And finally, when an ADU is proposed to be attached to the primary dwelling unit, a maximum height of twenty-five feet, not to exceed two stories, shall be allowed. In response to the new increased heights for detached ADUs, staff is also recommending an amendment specifying that detached two-story ADUs shall only be allowed when the creation of an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU cannot be achieved as a single-story ADU, subject to building height and setback standards. With regard to ADU parking requirements, the current code allows one parking space to be provided for an ADU unless it can meet one of the following: that the ADU is located within one-half-mile walking distance of public transit; this can include a bus stop; or if the ADU is located within an architecturally or historically significant historic district; or when on-street parking permits are required to park in the city but not offered to the occupant of the ADU; or when there is a car-share vehicle located within a block of the ADU. New state law exempts ADUs from parking requirements when one is proposed concurrently with the construction of a new single-family or multifamily dwelling, provided that one of the first four criteria is met. The existing code prohibits cities from requiring the correction of existing non-conforming zoning conditions as a condition of approval for the construction of an ADU. The amended code adds building code violations and unpermitted structures to the list when such violations do not present a threat to public health and safety and are not affected by the construction of the ADU or junior ADU. For clarification, this does not prohibit staff from requiring these items to be addressed. However, it cannot be made a condition of approval for an ADU that corrections be made to any non-conforming or unpermitted construction. The final code amendment is in relation to the processing and procedures when reviewing an ADU. The current code requires cities to act on any application for an ADU or junior ADU within sixty days, meaning to either approve or deny the application. New legislation adds that the denial of an ADU shall include in writing a full set of comments to the applicant with a list of items that are defective or deficient and a description of how the applicant can be remedied by the applicant. Staff is also proposing to add new definitions to the municipal code for terms that were previously referenced in the new height requirements. These new definitions are consistent with the definitions in Public Resource Code Section 21155 for high-quality transit corridors, defined as a corridor with a fixed route bus service with service intervals no longer than fifteen minutes during peak commute hours, and a major transit stop, which is defined as either an existing rail or bus rapid transit station, a ferry terminal served by either a bus or rail transit service, or the intersection of two or more major bus routes with a frequency interval of fifteen minutes or less during morning and afternoon peak commute periods. In San Gabriel, Valley Boulevard meets the definition of a high-quality transit corridor as it is serviced by L.A. County Metro Bus Route 76, which provides service intervals no longer than fifteen minutes during peak commute hours. The proposed amendments were reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the Sequel Guidelines. The amendment to the zoning ordinance is not considered a project as defined in Section 15378, and can be seen with certainty that it will not have a significant effect on the environment. On February 12th, 2024, the Planning Commission considered the Zone Text Amendment at a duly noticed public hearing and agreed to recommend to the city council approve the resolution with a vote of three to zero. Tonight's public hearing was advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on April 4th, 2024. The agenda for this meeting was posted in advance of the meeting at City Hall, the San Gabriel Public Library, and the San Gabriel Post Office, as well as on the city's website. With that, staff recommends that the city council take one of the following actions. Excuse me, this is a previous slide that was not changed, but the recommendations are to either conduct the public hearing and discuss the proposed ordinance, waive full reading and introduce the ordinance by title only, waive full reading of the ordinance and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular city council meeting, and the ordinance would then become effective thirty days after the adoption. The city council may also choose to provide comments and direct staff to return at a later date with revisions to the amendment for the city council's review and approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mullen, for the presentation. Does any Councilmember have any technical or factual questions for staff to clarify this report? Yes, Councilmember Chen.
Yes, just for my understanding, the purpose of the public hearing is to do procedural updates to our municipal code, right? So, we are aligned with state law? Correct. So, it's not like we can say we don't want to follow the state law. This is basically doing what we need to do to procedurally be in compliance and with the proper language that state law dictates.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
Any other Councilmember has a question? Okay, I see none. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have not received any public comments.
Okay, now I close the public hearing. So, it's now time for council to discuss who would like to start. So, do I have a vote or motion?
I'll move, well, let me check with the attorney. Do I need to read each one? Okay, so I move staff recommendation for this public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion is being made by Vice Mayor Menchaca and second by Councilmember Chen. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Next item, please.
Next item is Item Six, Continued Business, We Have None. Next is Item Seven, New Business. Item Eight, Consideration of Adoption of Ordinance Number 707, deleting Title III, Chapter Thirty-three, Sections 33.5 through 33.57 from the San Gabriel Municipal Code to Dissolve the Human Equity Access and Relations Here Commission and Potential Appointment of Two Councilmembers to a Human Relations Subcommittee. If you wish to comment on this item, please submit your speaker card to us today.
May I have a city manager, Mr. Mark Lozaro, to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'll keep this very brief because I'm quite certain not a single person came to hear me speak tonight, so I will get it as quickly as possible to the community and the council to discuss. But you'll recall that in the killing of George Floyd in 2020, the city council appointed a subcommittee of two members to make a recommendation to the council on how a community human relations commission could be adopted. Those two members came back with the purpose and scope of the Here Commission and presented that to the full city council, and eventually, the full city council adopted the resolution and ordinance that put our Here Commission into effect. At our March 5th meeting a few weeks ago, the city council directed staff to come back with an ordinance that would dissolve the Here Commission, and that is on the agenda for tonight for consideration by the council. There are six options or actions that the council has before them tonight. I won't belabor those options or actions, but Action One would be adopting that ordinance that would, in effect, dissolve the Here Commission. It would take a second reading and then would become effective thirty days after that second reading. Actions Two and Three would be to form a subcommittee of two council members, and the purpose of that subcommittee would be similar to when that subcommittee was formed in 2020, and any future human relations issues that are facing our community, those two council members could address or review or research those issues and present a recommendation to the full council on how to address those issues. There are two different kinds of subcommittees, which is why we have those two options or actions. One is a single-issue subcommittee. That would be something the council would give direction on, a single item, like forming the original Here Commission. Those meetings of the subcommittee would not have to be public meetings. They could be. Council could invite members of the public or all of the public to attend those meetings, but they don't have to be, and similar to when the original Here Commission was formed, that allows members of the subcommittee to work at all hours and times and at their convenience to come back with that recommendation. The second kind of a subcommittee would be a standing subcommittee. Several cities have standing subcommittees where when issues like, for example, if a city near us has a finance subcommittee, so anytime there are finance issues like a budget amendment, the subcommittee hears those items first and then makes a recommendation to the full council. The difference with that is it's in effect as long as the council wants it to be in effect, but all of those meetings are Brown Act meetings and would have to be open to the public agendas and all of that. I want to point out that Action Two or Three don't have to happen tonight. Council could do that at any time in the future, as you could with any other ad hoc committees that you decide to appoint. I just put those in there for options so the council understands the full array of actions that you have. Action Four would be to provide revised or renewed direction to the Here Commission in either the work plan or changing the purpose and the scope to more closely represent what the council is looking for. You could make those changes tonight, or you could make those changes at a future meeting. And finally, Action Five would be to do nothing, and that would, in effect, keep the Here Commission in its current state, and we would go on meeting as a Here Commission into the future. And Option Six is, obviously, council always has the option to come up with some other item that we haven't thought of ahead of time, and you can do that tonight as well. And with that, the city attorney and I are happy to answer any questions you have about procedures or how the commission or committees work or anything like that. And then Rebecca Perez and Matthew Morales Stevens are available to answer questions about the Here Commission, what they've done, and then also what other programs our city provides from a human relations or a human services standpoint. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I turn it back over to the council.
Thank you, Mark. Does any Councilmember have questions for staff to clarify the report? No? I see none. So, Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few written-in comments, which is about twenty-eight of them.
Sure.
And then we also have thirty public comments sitting in the audience. Which one would you like me to...
Just read the online comments first. Thank you.
We're going to start with the first comment received online. This comment comes from Father John Molly Nukes. He is a resident, and it reads as follows. "A multicultural, diverse city like San Gabriel is both a gift and a challenge. The work of the Here Commission is necessary to face that challenge. If we claim we no longer need to advocate for equity, we are fooling ourselves. When we need to leave the city to find non-Asian markets or cannot access services in San Gabriel because we only speak English, we rightly feel marginalized. Of course, we need to combat Asian hate and work to be sure that Black lives matter in our city, but we need to hear all voices of our residents, not just the minority majority. We also must not hide behind our religions to justify prejudice, fear, and even hate. Let us keep the Here Commission, then, to continue to take up the challenge to create a city where all are welcome, no matter their color or creed, sexual orientation, or gender identity." Our next comment is from Rick Khan. He is not a resident, but it reads as follows. "I had the privilege of serving on the Here Commission for three years. During these three years, Here Commission had a difficult task of navigating through goals for the purpose of the Human Equity Access and Relations Here Commission is to advance and advocate for equity, access, diversity, social justice, safety, mutual appreciation, increased cultural competency, positive intergroup relations, and respect for all members of the San Gabriel community. Here Commission has accomplished few notable tasks. During my tenure there were instances where there was resistance in providing information like traffic tickets issues based on ethnicity. My understanding was that PD already provided this information to the state and that that was sufficient. The present goals of the Here Commission are broad and can infringe on council's authority. I support keeping the Here Commission by following 7A, Option Four." Thank you. Our next comment is from George Kearney, resident, and it reads as follows. "As a lifelong resident of the San Gabriel, a retired San Gabriel public school teacher, a city commissioner, and longtime member of numerous professional, educational, and service groups, this statement is to express my long support for Item 7A. The proposal to dissolve the Here Commission and to urge the members of the council to so vote. While established four years ago, for an admirable purpose and a lawful goals, the Here Commission has more recently devolved into a strident and shrill advocacy group, pushing a narrow vision of ideological purity and conformity, which most recently manifested itself in the Commission's scheme to coerce and bully San Gabriel merchants and businesses with their sticker program. Worse, the Commission sought to enlist San Gabriel students, minors, into its scheme. This was bad enough, but then the council prudently told the Commission to rethink its idea and broaden its scope. The Commission reacted by devoting an entire meeting to a semi-hysterical and vicious attack on the council members, especially on Vice Mayor Menchaca, slandering her and including a bigoted attack on her Catholic faith. The Here Commissioners have demonstrated a fundamental lack of comprehension as to the nature of the city..." as to the nature of the city's commissions. Commissions are advisory in nature, not policymaking bodies, a function properly left to the city council. They have demonstrated total lack of judgment in choosing to become advocates for a narrow ideological purity campaign, instead of advocates for all of San Gabriel's diverse citizens. And by their vicious attacks on everyone who defers with their narrow vision, they have demonstrated an appalling lack of civility and just basic decency. And finally, I might note, with some sorrow, that persons associated with the Commission have chosen to subject me to personal attacks verbally and in writing for daring to disagree with them. San Gabriel has no need of this group and should have no room for it. It is sad and shameful that a group was formed to bring all of us together has instead served to divide us. For all of these reasons, then, I urge members of the council to vote to terminate the Here Commission." The next comment is from Doug Richter. It reads as follows. He is also a resident. "Good evening, Mayor Wu and council members. As I stated last month, I am in support of terminating this commission. When this commission was first started, it was set up to make recommendations to the City Council so that they could approve or disapprove any recommendations the commissions made. Lately, the commission has started making recommendations that sounded more like demands that should be approved by the council. It's sounding more like the commission is making decisions for the city and not the city council. Therefore, I think the Here Commission should be terminated for the good of the city. Thank you." Our next comment is from Sue Fitzsimmons and it reads as follows. "Good evening, Mayor Wu and City Council. I am personally asking the Here Commission be dissolve ordinance number seven zero seven tonight. With future meetings or readings, the current Here Commission has demonstrated a total lack of judgment in choosing to become advocates for their own ideological agenda instead of advocating for all of San Gabriel's diverse residents. They have launched vicious attacks on everyone who dares to disagree with them. For this very reason, the Here Commission must be dissolved tonight. Thank you." The next comment is from Assembly Member Mike Fong from the Forty-Ninth District. "Dear Mayor Wu and members of the City Council, the important work of advancing social justice strives when all of us contribute. I want to commend the city of San Gabriel's commitment to social justice, particularly in the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd and in response to the rise of anti-Asian hate in recent years. Promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion continues to be a vital need. As community leaders, we have a tremendous duty to ensure that residents feel safe, welcome, and indeed, especially as anti-LGBTQIA+ antisemitic and anti-Muslim incidents rise across the country. I encourage the city of San Gabriel to continue these important efforts. The city of San Gabriel is a mosaic of diverse races, ethnicities, cultures, languages, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, and backgrounds. Uplifting the voices of all residents and ensuring representation of a broad range of perspective, especially of historically marginalized groups, play a crucial role in strengthening our community. I have the honor of serving as vice chair of an Asian Pacific, Asian American Pacific Islander Legislative Caucus, as well as chair of the Select Committee on Hate, Racism, and Xenophobia. I was proud to host a roundtable on combating Asian hate in 2022 with Attorney General Rob Bonta highlighting the committee's dedicated efforts in the hearts of San Gabriel. The fight for equity and justice for all continues to look forward to supporting those efforts in the city of San Gabriel and throughout California." The next comment is from George Montez, resident. "If the Hearing Commission is going to provide better transparency and guidance, why would we dissolve it? Looks like we need all the expertise we can get. Individuals whose expertise and insights are crucial for our city are vital asset and we keep, we should keep it, not dissolve it." The next comment is from Congresswoman Judy Chu, Twenty-Eighth District, and it reads as follows. "Dear Mayor and members of the City Council, in times when values of equity and justice are under scrutiny, it is crucial for all of us to step forward in solidarity to uplift our most marginalized communities. The city of San Gabriel has served as a beacon of hope in this endeavor and it has worked hard to advance social justice over the years, particularly in response to the tragic murder of George Floyd and the alarming surge of anti-Asian hate. The city of San Gabriel is defined by its rich tapestry of cultures, races, religions, sexual orientations, gender identities, and histories. As leaders within our community, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that every resident feels not only safe, but truly embraced, especially amidst the concerning rise in discrimination against LGBTQIA+, Jewish, Muslim, and immigrant communities across the country. At a time when so many people are being silenced, I encourage the city of San Gabriel to continue listening and amplifying those diverse voices so that every person is heard. As a member of Congress representing San Gabriel and the Twenty-Eighth Congressional District, I have made it my life's work to empower marginalized communities. Ensuring that all people from all walks of life have a seat at the table is fundamental to our democracy and necessary for our communities to thrive. Our diversity is our strength and I look forward to working with you to create more equitable and inclusive society." Our next comment is from George Valdez, resident, and it reads as follows. "Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing to express my thoughts regarding the future direction of the Here Commission. Following the council's receipt of all our welcome proposal from the commission, it was returned for revision. Having closely followed the proceedings of the next commission meeting on YouTube, I was disappointed to observe that instead of focusing on revising the proposal, a significant portion of the meeting was spent criticizing the council for its decision. This appears to indicate a strained working relationship between the elected city officials and the volunteer advisory panel. I strongly recommend that the council consider adopting option number one, which involves waiving the full reading and proceeding to dissolve the commission. Furthermore, I suggest that the council direct the Community Services Department to continue the initiatives initiated by the commission, such as those pertaining to mental health, and collaborate with nonprofit San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ+ Center to explore solutions and proposals addressing the needs of their community. As a resident of San Gabriel, I believe these steps would lead to more productive and inclusive outcomes." The next comment is from Amanda Andrade. She is a resident and it reads as follows. "As the newest member of the Here, I speak in support of continuation of this commission. One of the most powerful reasons I was drawn to apply for a volunteer position was due to the purpose, namely that of advancing equity, access, social justice, and respect for all members of the community. I felt as though it was my duty as an educator and as a parent to engage in the work for the betterment of our future generations. I have been dismayed to see that this work could come to an end as a city-sponsored program and constituents of the community would not have a dedicated group to count on to advance this important work. The city of San Gabriel is rich in diversity of race, religion, economic status, gender identification, ability status, and political affiliation. That which makes us a great community also makes it important to support resources to bring community together through mental or mutual understanding. I have attended many city events with my biracial family and have learned so much about various cultures and tradition. It is my hope that our city leadership would make the choice to continue with the Here Commission so that great plans set forth for the coming year can persist. Saving the Here Commission will send a clear message to the community that every citizen matters." The next comment is from Stacia Cato. She is not a resident. Her comment reads as follows. "As president of the PFLAG, San Gabriel Valley Asian Pacific Islander Chapter, an organization that supports our LGBTQ+ loved ones and those who love them, I support the Here Commission continuing their valuable work in San Gabriel. Now is not the time to end such vital work in our community. The Here Commission ensures voice to the voiceless." The next comment is from Christian Castaneda, resident, and it reads as follows. "I've lived in San Gabriel nearly my entire life and I want to have confidence that the city I call home does its part in creating safe and welcoming spaces for all members of the community. The work the Here Commission does is in line with those beliefs and I think that work should be, should continue." The next comment is from Natalia Castaneda, resident, and it reads as follows. "As a young resident of the San Gabriel, I am very disappointed in the actions made by the councilmen that our community is supposed to feel supported by. Being a young adult, I have hopes of living in San Gabriel in the future. I love everything about it. It is where I grew up, met lifelong friends, and felt safe and welcome. By dissolving the Here community, I can say without, with confidence, I will no longer feel comfortable raising children in a city that does not welcome all. San Gabriel is a very diverse city with many schools that fall under SGUSD. What example are we setting for the youth? What are children supposed to think when their own city claims they support all but go back on their word when it comes to the LGBTQ+ community? Apparently, now it is considered a sin according to councilmen. I know one of our councilmen, who was a former mayor, on a personal level. Growing up, I thought it was so cool that I personally knew someone in such a high status in the city I grew up in. I now have a lot of respect for the said councilman, knowing the action he is taking to discriminate against people in our community. I support and appreciate the work done by the Here Committee and believe it has done much more good than bad for our community. Thank you." The next comment is from Lori Chu, resident, and it reads as follows. "I am a resident of San Gabriel who enjoys the diversity and freedoms presented in our community. As a resident, citizen, and community member, we are obligated to support all persons from all backgrounds, races, ethnicity, religions, abilities, genders, sexual orientation, and gender identity. I oppose the motion to dissolve the DEI Commission." The next comment is from Kevin Chu, resident, and it reads as follows. "I am a resident of San Gabriel. One of the things that makes San Gabriel special is the community acceptance of different races, ethnicities, religions, genders, and sexual orientation. The city has resources for those who have questions. The DEI has been a good resource for the community. I oppose the motion to dissolve the DEI Commission." The next comment is anonymous and it reads as follows. "I am in opposition of termination of the Human Equity Access Relations Here Commission. LGBTQ+ people deserve to be seen, heard, and supported in San Gabriel." The next comment is from Jose Escobar, Regional Health Officer for San Gabriel Valley SPA Three. "Dear San Gabriel City Council Members, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health works to protect the health and well-being of over ten million residents in the largest county in the United States. One of our top priorities is to advance health equity through collaborations with community partners like the Human Equity Access and Relations Here Commission in the city of San Gabriel. The department supports efforts such as the Here Commission's work to advance and advocate for a more equitable, inclusive, and just society. In particular, the commission's efforts to provide mental wellness education, resources, and activities in multiple languages to increase access and community outreach align with the department's focus on equitable health outcome and improved well-being. We look forward to working with the Here Commission at its upcoming mental wellness movie screening and panel discussion addressing the effects of intergenerational trauma during Mental Health Awareness in Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in May. These types of community events which explore universal themes decrease the stigma by allowing diverse communities to connect through shared experience and create opportunities to facilitate better cultural understanding and acceptance. Thank you for your ongoing support of the health equity efforts and initiatives to keep Los Angeles County community and residents healthy." The next comment is from James E. Herr, Director of National Center for the Preservation of Democracy. "Dear members of the San Gabriel City Council, we had a distinct honor of recently welcoming commissioners from the city of San Gabriel's Here Commission, the city manager and the human resources and community services staff for a visit to the Bias Inside Us exhibition here at the Japanese-American National Museum. We were struck by the willingness of people to come here on their own time in order to expand their knowledge and capacity to bring services and events to the people of the city of San Gabriel. It was truly impressive to see city officials so dedicated to understanding the important issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion and how it can create more, a more vibrant community. Additionally, the list of programs that the Here Commission has brought to the city of San Gabriel since its creation is truly impressive. These programs benefited every sector of life in the city. So it was very disappointing to hear that the City Council seeks to disband the Here Commission, which provides important insight into issues of inequity in the city and how they can be addressed. With the creation of Commission, the city had distinguished itself as a leader among cities and communities across the region in looking for ways to ensure that all people are safe, welcomed, and valued. The message being sent now is the exact opposite. At the Democracy Center, we believe that all voices in the community have the right to be heard and to participate in our democracy and to live in a world free of fear. We stand with the commission and their mission to advance and advocate for equity, access, diversity, social justice, safety, mutual appreciation, increased cultural competency, positive intergroup relations, and respect for all members of the San Gabriel community. We strongly urge the City Council not to take this rash and unmeasured step that would serve only to tarnish the reputation of the city." The next comment is from Yoli Agianno, non-resident, and it reads as follows. We need safe places like here. Our society has many issues to resolve for the sake of LGBTQ plus communities. The next comment is from Jason Moss, Executive Director of the Jewish Federation. Good morning. My name is Jason Moss. In addition to being the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel Pomona Valley and resident of San Gabriel, I am also a Commissioner of LA County's Commission on Human Relations. I strongly urge you not to dissolve San Gabriel's Here Commission. As you may remember, on May 2, 2023, the City Council, or the City of San Gabriel City Council adopted a resolution designated January 28 as Stand Against Hate Action Day. I bring this up because the here Commission's role is not one that is ever done. According to the city's website, the purpose of the Human Equity Access and Relations Here Commission is to advance and advocate for equity, access, diversity, social justice, safety, mutual appreciation, increased cultural competency, positive intergroup relation, and respect for all members of the San Gabriel community. With the current prominence of hate we have witnessed and continue to experience here in LA County, San Gabriel's Here Commission is more necessary than ever before. In its 2022 Hate Crimes Report, LA County Human Relations Commission found that years was the second highest level of reported hate crimes in Los Angeles County in more than 20 years. In fact, the city council felt it was necessary back in October 2020 when it voted unanimously to establish it. As a resident of San Gabriel, I am empowered in knowing that the city has this commission. The city of San Gabriel must do everything it can to support all of its citizens, and the here Commission helps to make that happen. Please do not do something as rash as dissolving the here Commission. We need it now more than ever. The next comment is from Bree, non-resident, and her comment reads as follows. My name is Bree, and I am an LGBT educator and a resident of San Gabriel Valley. In the last two years, hate crimes against LGBTQ community have more than doubled. At the same time, calls to LGBTQ plus youth crisis hotlines have exploded. In light of this information, it is clear that the All Is Welcome program is a necessary act of public safety. LGBTQ people deserve to know that the building they are about to enter is safe. They deserve to know that they will be protected from hate and harassment as they eat, shop, and conduct city business. I don't consider it a coincidence that at the same meeting at which speakers claimed it was dangerous for teenagers to engage with LGBT subjects and speak up on behalf of their own rights and the rights of others, council members moved to dissolve the here Commission. It's clear that the motivation begins with the dissolution is nothing more than an attack on LGBT residents of the San Gabriel Valley. One of the common issues cited by youth called into suicide hotlines in 2023 was anti-LGBTQ plus political rhetoric, such as debate over laws and policies limiting rights. These youths say, "My government hates me. My school hates me. They don't want me to exist." Does the city of San Gabriel want to be one of the government's young LGBTQ people's site when calling this into the suicide hotlines? Please do not dissolve the here Commission. Please do not give in to the anti-LGBT rhetoric. Please protect the rights and safety of our most vulnerable community members. Thank you. The next comment is from Edgar. He is not a resident, and his comment reads as follows. I am writing to express my disappointment about the council's consideration to dissolve the Human Equity Access and Relations Commission. The here Commission plays an indispensable role in advocating for the equity and social justice within San Gabriel. At a time when neighboring city of LA is seeing a 13.89% increase in anti-trans hate crimes and a 27.14% rise in anti-LGBTQ hate crimes, it is clear that we need to the here Commission now more than ever. Please also note that according to the political data of the 19,479 registered voters in the city of San Gabriel, Democratic voters make up the largest share, while Republican voters barely scrape up 19% of the registered voters. I want this to sink in because you are about to make a move that's not just unpopular, but is practically a political self-sabotage. Pulling the plug on the here Commission is not the right move. Please keep the here Commission in place. Thank you. The next comment is from Violet Rose Wang. She is a resident, and it reads as follows. I am Violet Rose Wang, Gabriellino High Alumni, current USC student, former Gabriellino Gender Sexuality Alliance President, a local transgender bisexual woman. In a time which hostility against LGBTQ plus people, and particularly transgender people, has been rising more than ever, it is vital for your supportive groups such as the here Commission to exist in San Gabriel. It is important for any sort of group or organization, including a city, to show its support for minority groups. Growing up as a scared LGBTQ plus kid in San Gabriel, even a little bit of indicated support made me feel safer. I remember the first time I walked into a classroom at Jefferson Middle School that showed any support for LGBTQ plus students openly, and how safe and welcome I felt in that classroom with that teacher. I wish that I could have felt that comfort earlier, and not just my school. I wish that I could have felt safer in public being transgender. I wish that there was more open support in our city at the time, so that my parents wouldn't have had to fear for my safety when I came out to them. I want LGBTQ plus students today and all San Gabriel citizens today to feel safe in our city, to feel openly and proudly supported, having the here Commission. Knowing that the city is indeed putting an effort into supporting people like me makes me feel safer in San Gabriel. The removal of the here Commission would hinder that progress. The here Commission is an important part of LGBTQ plus support in San Gabriel. Please do not remove the vital support from our community. Vote no on Ordinance 707. The next comment is from Robin S. Toma, Executive Director for the LA County Commission on Human Relations. The comment reads as follows. Dear Mayor and members of the city council, on behalf of LA County's Commission Human Relations and its president Ian Davidson, I write to express our opposition to the proposal to terminate the city of San Gabriel's Human Equity Access and Relations Commission Here Commission. We respectfully ask that your council consider other alternatives to addressing its concerns other than drastic step of elimination. To eliminate the here Commission will likely be perceived as a rejection of all the work the San Gabriel has done to promote inclusion and belonging of vulnerable targeted or vulnerable people, targeted because they represent a minority race, religion, or sexual orientation. Although not intended, that action will embolden residents who do not want to welcome a diverse community into your city, to openly express hostility and even acts of hate. Our Commission's mission is to transform prejudice into acceptance, inequity into justice, and hostility into peace. As the agency is leading the countywide anti-hate program and system la-versus-hate.org and tracking the annual reporting of hate crimes for the entire county of Los Angeles, we are well aware of the growth in hate targeting blacks, Latinas, Latinos, Asian Pacific Islanders, and the Jewish community, the LGBTQ plus, the Muslim communities, and many others. We believe the political environment in coming months and years will necessitate a government-supported body that can provide feedback from the city's most vulnerable populations. During these hated times, the here Commission is in need more than ever to help promote healthy intergroup relations of civility and respect for many groups targeted for hate, to pursue difficult conversations needed to reach a mutual understanding, and to provide advice to the city on ensuring sense of belonging for all those who experience vulnerability to hate, hostility, and discrimination, because they are not of the dominant races, religions, sexual orientations, and gender identities. One of the greatest challenges we all face in these times is recognizing in full impact of our personal actions and words. This is particularly true for the elected leaders of the government, who, like any human being, are personally affected by what they experience in their official role. However, that might seem appropriate to do in a personal or even professional relationship. May be a mistake for a public leader of government, which should consider the weight of the responsibility of a larger impact of their actions. Eliminating the here Commission will have very harmful consequences to vulnerable residents of the San Gabriel because of its actual and symbolic impact. We hope that you will take up our offer. The next comment is from D. Gutierrez, resident, and it reads as follows. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members, it is important to verify the accuracy of any statements made by individuals or organizations before accepting them as true. If there are concerns about the truth of a statement, it may be prudent to investigate further or seek confirmation from reliable sources. It is also important to hold those who spread misinformation or falsehoods accountable for their actions. In the past couple of months, there has been a barrage of misinformation being thrown around regarding the city council's intentions to dismantle the here Commission. The first lie is being told by those supporting the Commission, or rather, the lie that they are being told, is that the decision to put the Commission together in the first place was a unanimous decision by the San Gabriel City Council. Those who know the truth or actually care to go by the facts know that the vote was not unanimous and that one council member voted against it. So sad that all those organizations and individuals that now want to voice their opinions have not been told the truth from the beginning, and, by the looks of it, never bothered to research facts. Diverse voices are often marginalized or excluded by hateful commissions that promote a narrow discriminatory narrative. It is crucial to amplify the center and the voices of marginalized communities to ensure that all perspectives are heard, valued, especially when voices are those of true San Gabriel residents who must live in the city where decisions such as the one present today regarding the future of the here Commission can impact our community. Our voices must be included and given equal representation in any commission or decision-making process. It is important to ensure that all perspectives are heard and considered, as this leads to more comprehensive and inclusive outcomes. Exclusion of diverse voices can perpetuate biases, discrimination, and inequality. It is essential to prioritize diversity and inclusion in all aspects of decision-making to create a more just and equitable society. With that being said, it is time to put an end to hateful commissions that aim to discriminate, spread division, and harm others. We must come together to reject and condemn any form of hate and work towards building a more inclusive and compassionate society. Honorable council members, I humbly ask that you support your city and let us stand together against bigotry and intolerance and put an end to hateful commissions once and for all. We must strive for unity, understanding, and acceptance for all, something the here Commission clearly failed to do. The next comment is from Letizia Castaneda. She is a resident, and it reads as follows. As a lifelong resident of the San Gabriel, I am thoroughly disappointed in this motion. During this current time in our lives when diversity, inclusion, and equity is so vital, why would the councilmen even make a motion to dissolve this commission? Look at what's happening around the world and the hate that is so palpable. Is this what we want for our quaint city? Where is humanity and respect for others? To me, this motion represents hate, fear, and inequality. The next comment is anonymous, and the comment states LGBTQ. Our last written comment is from Jeff Prang, Assessor, Los Angeles County, President, LA County LGBTQ Plus Elected Officials Association, Drew Alaman, Clerk of City of Covina, Florencio Briones, Trustee Almani Union High School District, Henry Lowe, Council Member, City of Monterey Park, Jason Leon, Council Member, City of Pasadena, Sasha Renee Perez, Vice Mayor of City of Alhambra, Gabrielle Quiñones, Mayor of the City of La Puente, Aaron Cimental, Board Vice President, Bassett Unified School District, Alton Wang, Board President, Pasadena City College, Tamis Wong, Mayor, City of Monterey Park. Their comment reads as follows. Dear San Gabriel City Council Members, during the time where attacks and violence against members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, and queer-plus LGBTQ plus community continues to grow exponentially, it is more imperative now than ever for leaders to take substantive steps to protect the well-being and safety of our LGBTQ plus residents. As a coalition of LGBTQ plus elected officials representing the San Gabriel Valley, we want to ensure LGBTQ plus residents across our region, particularly LGBTQ plus youth, feel safe and welcome in our communities. The San Gabriel City Council has created a powerful model to achieve this with the Human Equity Access and Relations Here Commission, providing a safe space for community members to discuss issues such as race, gender, and sexual orientation. With LGBTQ plus Pride Month just a month and a half away, it is critical that we allow the work of the Commissions to continue. Across the United States, we have seen an alarming rise in violent attacks against LGBTQ plus people. One in four trans adults experience physical attacks because of their gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. The FBI's annual hate crime report for 2022 saw a spike in attacks based on gender identity up to 32.9% from the prior year, with a jump in attacks based on sexual orientation up by 13.8%. And recent analysis found that the number of anti-LGBTQ plus school hate crimes serious enough to be reported to the local police have more than doubled nationwide. It is clear that services, resources, and programs dedicated to supporting LGBTQ plus residents in our communities are more vital today than ever, and the work of the here Commission has been an important part of amplifying the efforts to protect LGBTQ plus community members. We urge the council to support the continuation of the Commission and engage with LGBTQ plus leaders and stakeholders to find solutions that best serve our communities.
Thank you, Marilyn. Good job. Thank you. Let's continue with, before we start. Does anyone need a break? We okay? Okay, let's continue.
Our first comment is from Gabriel Ariano.
Hello. My name is Gabriel Ariano, and I'm a community organizer with the Wall Las Memorias. I'm also a lifelong resident of the San Gabriel Valley, currently residing in La Puente. It was nice hearing that my mayor signed on to the letter in support of this commission. I just wanted to start by saying this commission is unique among cities in the San Gabriel Valley. West Covina, where I went to high school and spent much of my life, had tried to create a similar commission back in 2021, but to no avail. I know the mayor personally supports the commission and others like it, and was disappointed to hear about the current situation. I think it's a shame that this council would consider disbanding a group that comes far and wide on this side of the county. It's true that the SGV is a relatively tolerant and incredibly diverse area. However, that does not mean that there are no issues regarding bigotry and willful ignorance. Just look at the underdog bookstore in Monrovia, a space for queer people is being forced to shutter their doors because of safety concerns stemming from increased homophobic and transphobic attacks. I've heard from people who support disbandment that youth who get involved with this commission or youth who choose to come to these meetings and advocate on behalf of themselves and their fellow peers are somehow too young to know who they are, what's important to them, and how this will somehow lead to heightened anxiety and depression. I would say the opposite, actually. Youth who don't feel like they have a safe place to be their authentic selves, or who don't have the support from their families, schools, hometown, et cetera, experience greater mental health challenges than their counterparts who have support in all those areas. I came out when I was 13 going on 14 on my own accord, because hiding who I was and am was not sustainable with regards to my happiness and overall well-being. Many of my friends and other queer people I've met knew at an earlier age. Youth should be believed when they're trying to tell you in plain language how they feel and what they want and need from you. I was fortunate enough to have support from my friends and family during my coming-out process, but not everyone has that same luxury. With this support, I was allowed to grow as a person and be unapologetically myself, and this support in turn made me comfortable enough to advocate on behalf of others in my community throughout high school and beyond. And the youth who feel compelled to defend this commission are doing it for the same reasons that I did. Unfortunately, not everyone grew up in an environment that encouraged and fostered that sense of responsibility to their neighbors. This commission gives voice to minority groups in San Gabriel and offers support that they otherwise would not have received. If you want all residents in the city to thrive, it's imperative that marginalized groups know that their elected representatives listen to and address their concerns. I know a lot of the conversation today is centered around the LGBTQ community, but disbanding this commission has negative repercussions for all groups who fall under this commission's purview. It's not right, and if the city council has an issue with any of the programs, they should look at remedying those concerns, not disbanding it altogether. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Richard Saldivar.
It's gonna be hard to follow that young man. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Richard Saldivar. I'm the founder and the executive director of the Wall Las Memorias. We're here as an organization. We have staff who live here. We have clients who live here. I also want to tell you that I'm a Catholic, and I practice my faith. By the way, I hear this back and forth from commentary from the audience sometimes. You know, you've got to go back to Pope Francis when they talk about LGBTQ. Remember his words, "Who am I to judge?" The reason I started the Wall Las Memorias, I want you to understand that since the AIDS epidemic started, over 43,000 people have died from AIDS in Los Angeles County. Over 50,000 people today are living with HIV. How many of you lost someone to AIDS? How many of you lost someone to AIDS? If you did, you might understand that they didn't die because they were sinful or they made mistakes. They went out and they dated just like you, but they weren't so lucky. They died. I get emotional because I have parents that go to the AIDS monument since I wish I would have known my son was gay. It was too late. They rubbed their hands against the wall to feel his name. Today, we're looking at an increase of suicide among young people. Look at CDC. People who are going homeless, young people are going homeless because they don't feel comfortable in their home or in their community. People think that everybody goes to West Hollywood, that West Hollywood's gay. No! They live here in San Gabriel Valley, in the city of San Gabriel, but they go over there because they don't feel welcome here. This commission was doing incredible work. Didn't mean that they were all correct in what they were doing, but you authored that commission. You're council members. In a democracy, that works. You hear back from the community, from its citizenry, as to what you should be doing, and you work with them to modify it and address the issues. You know, I ask you to keep this commission. Do not eliminate the commission and think big world, think visionaries. You had young people coming up and talking about the issue in the Middle East. I go home with my partner and we cry at night. Why can't the Israelis and the Palestinians talk this through? Right? Ego. I ask you today to consider talking through this issue. This is not one side against the other. This is about humanity. If we do that here, we can do it throughout the world. And lastly, remember this, God created us all equally. Protect our lives, protect our families, protect our youth. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sophia Pu.
My name is Sophia Pu. I am a senior at Gabriolino High School and the daughter of Jason Pu and Kathy Feng. As a proud San Gabriel resident for almost my whole life, it is because I love this city that I push it to be better. I love that my school is the only one in the nation named Gabriolino High School and that we have Tongva displayed on all of our sports memorabilia on our field. But Chief Morales himself has told me that that is only meaningful if there is an active effort to preserve and promote Tongva heritage. And that's why it's important for the commission to continue its advocacy for a land acknowledgement statement and why it's important for the Here Commission to continue to exist. I love that when I walk through my neighborhood, I can hear 15 different languages spoken in the span of 15 minutes, and my parents always remind me how lucky I am to have grown up unashamed of the color of my skin, the languages I speak, and the food that I eat. Yet when a crisis like the pandemic or the Monterey Park mass shooting happens, it is my neighbors who don't speak English who are the first ones to be left out of the conversation. And that is why Here's work to increase the city's translation services are so important. In fact, the Here Commission's work has never been more important. It was only two years ago that anti-Asian hate crimes skyrocketed by over 300%. Right here in the Mission District, we held rallies and vigils to mourn the community members that we lost. And it was only one year ago that I and the rest of our communities watched dozens of elders who looked like my grandparents being wheeled out on stretchers out of Star Dance Studio. The Here Commission knows that the Asian-American community who comprises 65% of your city is still hurting from these issues, and they were planning an AAPI Mental Health Awareness Month in May. But if the commission is dissolved, that resource will not be available to our loved ones. I love this city because it is diverse and dedicated to progress, but eliminating the commission only pushes us towards ignorance and intolerance. I urge the council members to do what's right for the people they represent and ensure their legacy is one of lifting people up, not pushing others down. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Feng.
My name is Kathy Feng. I'm a Chinese-American civil rights attorney. I'm the wife of Jason Pu and a proud San Gabriel resident. As a Chinese-American, when Jason Pu was running for city council, he often encountered residents who said to him, "Go back home. I will never vote for a Chinese person." I think some of you have experienced that kind of discrimination. But he decided, once he was elected, that it was important for him to push for things like the Lunar New Year celebration, and he helped to write and create the Here Commission so that our next generation, no matter who they were, could grow up in a city there where they would be comfortable and proud. This year, more than ever, we need the Here Commission. That's why I'm here to support the continuation of the Here Commission. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Tim Hartley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to urge you to adopt Staff Recommendation Number Five and permit the Here Commission to continue its vital work. My name is Reverend Tim Hartley, and I'm honored to serve as a priest at the oldest Protestant church in the San Gabriel Valley, Church of Our Savior, located here in the city of San Gabriel. I want to address three arguments I heard raised in opposition to the Here Commission's proposal to create a Pro LGBTQ+ All Our Welcome campaign in San Gabriel. Number one, one of you said that the Here Commission may have run its course. In a time when hate crimes are on the rise across nearly every demographic, I find that statement baffling. Likewise, several of you question the need for an All Our Welcome campaign. I find that sentiment discouraging and disappointing, especially since it's coming from a body where not one individual identifies as belonging to the class of people the program was aimed at making feel safe and welcome. I promise you there is a need, and I encourage you to exercise both empathy and humility in listening to your constituents' comments tonight. LGBTQ-plus people live and work in every city, but sadly, not every city supports or even acknowledges their existence. That lack of visible support is one reason why more than 40% of LGBTQ+ youth, brothers, sisters, sons, daughters, friends, report considering suicide. Number two, I heard it suggested that businesses might face a backlash for choosing not to participate in the All Our Welcome campaign. I feel fairly certain this was not an argument backed up by any objective data. Rather, it is the sort of point designed solely for the purpose of injecting unwarranted fear into this debate. Instead of succumbing to this pessimistic tactic, I encourage this council to look to other cities who have successfully introduced a similar All Our Welcome program. Pasadena's Old Pasadena District successfully introduced a similar program last year. It's been a resounding success. And while not every business has chosen to participate, to my knowledge, not one of those fears of a backlash has materialized. Finally, number three, a concern was raised about the way the All Our Welcome campaign might be received by some Christians, and I am acutely aware of the myriad ways in which Christianity has been and continues to be weaponized as a politically expedient way to ostracize the LGBTQ-plus community. I am here tonight because a big part of my call to the priesthood is to counter the negative ways in which Christianity is still being used as a tool for othering instead of inviting all into the fold, as Jesus did, I might add. It is important for me to say for the record, this priest, this pastor, this reverend lives by a faith that sees the inherent dignity in every... in everyone.
Just conclude it.
Okay, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. When I took holy orders, I vowed to fight for and respect the dignity of those on the margins. The work of the Here Commission from my perspective is accomplishing the same secular goal. I urge you to follow Staff Recommendation Number Five and retain the commission.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from Cheryl A. Cabot.
Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, and councilors, I'm a longtime resident of San Gabriel. Recently, the members of the Here Commission made it a point to bully and disparage me in emails, the media, social media, and then in-person at city council meeting. Approximately 40-plus people who don't even know me made it a point to loudly speak my name in a negative manner at the city council meeting. Why? Because the Here Commissioners told them to and because I was brazen enough to expose the commissioners of trying to exploit minors by asking them to speak in public at a city council meeting about being LGBTQ+. In all my statements, I have never, ever expressed anything negative about LGBTQ-plus people or students, but the Here Commissioners have tried to change the narrative by saying I am anti-LGBTQ+, which is an outright lie. In fact, I have been a champion for the minors that the Here Commission tried to exploit. In response to their exposure, the Here Commission asked minors to write in comments to the city council under the guise of anonymous. This was an epic failure, however, because some of them stated, "I am a student of Gabriolino High, and I am a 17-year-old student," which just proves my point. They are trying to recruit and exploit minors. My son was actually worried about me coming to this meeting tonight because of the constant attacks, smears, and lies directed at me and others. Unfortunately, a senior resident who has written in to support of eliminating the Here Commission was part of his screen door kicked in two nights ago. The time he and his wife were sitting in the living room, nothing like this has ever happened before. The timing seems suspect since prior to that, the same gentleman was called by Here Commissioners and asked to rescind his statements. He denied. Then he received negative emails, very nasty ones, I might say. What kind of people attack and harass senior citizens and exploit minors? Since my name has been used in a derogatory fashion, as I said, in emails, media, social media, and here in-person, I think it's only fair I name names as well. I will not name all 40-plus, but here are the top contenders. Here Commissioner Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunes, Here Commission Chair Vicky Goto, Here Commissioner Kathy Chavez Norris, Morris, George Herrera, Jeanne Rea, Christian Port, and Richard Powers. Trying to muzzle me and frighten me with bully tactics has not worked. The Here Commission has also tried to bully the entire city council. Because of their strong-monged tactics in complete opposition of the stated purpose of this commission, I support the termination of the Here Commission.
Thank you.
The next comment is from Edith Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I am here this evening tonight to read a letter on behalf of LA County Supervisor Hilda Solis, which was read for the record at the last council meeting, but our position remains unchanged. The creation in 2020 of the San Gabriel Human Equity Access and Relations Here Commission occurred at a time of reckoning for social justice and equity across the country in the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd. The commission was one of the first of its kind in the San Gabriel Valley and has served as a model for surrounding cities seeking to make their local governments more accessible and equitable for all residents. My office has supported the work of the Here Commission and was thrilled to recognize them in May 2023 for their partnership with the Asian Youth Center in combating anti-AAPI hate. To this end, I strongly urge the city to decide against the dissolution of the Here Commission. The commission provides a necessary perspective that helps ensure that marginalized voices are heard in local government. Kudos to all of those behind me who have raised their voices tonight. Their work to create safe spaces for the discussion of issues impacting residents and visitors, these issues include race, gender, sexual orientation, disability, age, religion, and other diverse identities. The Here Commission makes San Gabriel a more engaging and welcoming community and advances many of the values my office and I fight for across the first district of the county of Los Angeles. Maintaining and strengthening the commission instead of seeking to dissolve it is an opportunity for the city of San Gabriel to continue to be leaders in the San Gabriel Valley on civic engagement, inclusion, and mutual respect. I stand in solidarity with community leaders and support the communities that are working to foster the ideals that the commission fights for in the city of San Gabriel and firmly oppose its dissolution. Sincerely signed, Los Angeles County Supervisor Hilda Solis. Thank you.
The next comment is from Dr. Felix Nunez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dr. Felix Nunez. I am a Harvard-trained family physician and a 22-year resident of San Gabriel who has spent his entire career caring for low-income and underserved communities. I stand here before you as a father, husband, friend, and neighbor of individuals whose lives have been enriched by the work of the San Gabriel Here Commission. Founded four years ago in response to an act of hate which was fueled by bigotry and racism, the Here Commission has served not only as a concrete manifestation of our city's commitment to the values of diversity and inclusion, but also provided meaningful programming and guidance for our city as we navigate one of the most divisive and politically violent periods in our nation's history. In preparation of my speaking before you here today, I have carefully considered the work of the Here Commission and the well-developed All Our Welcome Commission. The Commission provides a necessary perspective that helps ensure that marginalized voices are heard in local government. Kudos to all of those behind me who have raised their voices tonight. Their work to create safe spaces for the discussion of issues impacting residents and visitors, these issues include race, gender, sexual orientation, disability, age, religion, and other diverse identities. The Here Commission makes San Gabriel a more engaging and welcoming community and advances many of the values my office and I fight for across the first district of the county of Los Angeles. Maintaining and strengthening the Commission instead of seeking to dissolve it is an opportunity for the city of San Gabriel to continue to be leaders in the San Gabriel Valley on civic engagement, inclusion, and mutual respect. I stand in solidarity with community leaders and support the communities that are working to foster the ideals that the Commission fights for in the city of San Gabriel and firmly oppose its dissolution. Sincerely signed, Los Angeles County Supervisor Hilda Solis. Thank you.
The next comment is from Dr. Felix Nunez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dr. Felix Nunez. I am a Harvard-trained family physician and a 22-year resident of San Gabriel, who has spent his entire career caring for low-income and underserved communities. I stand here before you as a father, husband, friend, and neighbor of individuals whose lives have been enriched by the work of the San Gabriel Here Commission. Founded four years ago in response to an act of hate, which was fueled by bigotry and racism, the Here Commission has served not only as a concrete manifestation of our city's commitment to the values of diversity and inclusion, but also provided meaningful programming and guidance for our city as we navigate one of the most divisive and politically violent periods in our nation's history. In preparation of my speaking before you here today, I have carefully considered the work of the Here Commission and the well-developed "All Are Welcome" program, a program meant to affirm our city's shared values of welcoming members of the LGBTQ community to patronize and participate in the civic life and institutions which we have developed and nurtured here in San Gabriel. While I have heard council members speak to the lack of need for tailored programming to support this particular community, I respectfully remind you that the LGBTQ community have suffered mass shootings, targeted brutality and killings, the harassment of businesses, and open repression by public officials and our courts, who have created a framework for legal discrimination against the LGBT community members. We know from validated research that the LGBTQ community, youth face discrimination and harassment, suffering from an increased incidence of mental health conditions and suicide. These community members face real acts of hatred and discrimination in our schools and places of business. The Here Commissioners were absolutely correct in constructing a council-approved work plan that developed the "All Are Welcome" program, and their work remains unfinished. Council members, now is exactly the time to reaffirm our city's commitment to supporting diversity and inclusion by voting down the motion to terminate the Here Commission. Now is the time to demonstrate to our community, our state, and our nation that our city's mission to stand as a beacon for justice and diversity and inclusion is never-ending. No, council members, the Here Commission has not run its course, but rather its work is just beginning. And those of us who have come together to save the Here Commission will be the greatest allies to those who support the continuation of the Commission. Council, we are here, we are listening, and we vote. Gracias, xíxe. Thank you.
The next comment is from Ray C.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Ray, and I work here in San Gabriel as an anti-hate activist. In my time working here in San Gabriel, both with the wider community, with the youth in your high schools, I have found the Here Commission to be an incredibly useful resource and an incredibly vital part of the activist ecosystem, and I think the number of people here today speak that as well, including the high schoolers who have chosen to get engaged in the civic life of their city, which my experience is very rare. Working in the schools, I see that a lot of the youth happen to identify as queer or LGBTQ+ and are very proud of their identity. In my own experience growing up, I have, among the many friends I've made throughout my life, I've many of them who are queer, especially among the Asian-American community. Despite being out to their friends, despite being out having loved ones for years, many of them have not told their parents about this very close and vital part of themselves. And I think that initiatives that the Here Commission has faced backlash on, such as the San Gabriel Bell with the pride flag on it, are vital and incredibly important in showing these youth, in showing people who were queer youths in my own life, that they should be welcome in this community. I think this backlash against the Here Commission is completely unwarranted, completely outrageous, and I'm fully in favor of the Here Commission continuing its work in its present state. Thank you.
The next speaker is Julian Loza.
Good evening, council members. My name is Julian Loza, current resident of San Gabriel. I'm here representing the Wallace Memorialia, as you may heard, a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving the Latino LGBTQ+ and other underserved populations in Los Angeles, including San Gabriel and neighboring residents. As a resident of San Gabriel, I've always felt welcome in this city. It is known for being welcoming to so many diverse groups of people. As a gay Latino, I've never been worried about my safety in public. These neighborhoods have provided a sense of security, whether it was catching my bus during the day or returning in the late hours of the night. This sense of safety and acceptance is a testament to the unique character of San Gabriel, equality not often found in other cities. It is something we should take great pride in nurturing and preserving. The Wallace Memorialia wholeheartedly supports the invaluable work of the Here Commission. I urge the city council to continue its support for this Commission for upholding values of diversity and inclusion for all of San Gabriel. Thank you.
The next comment is from David Localeo.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. My name is David Localeo. I'm a 19-year resident of the city of San Gabriel. I come before you today on behalf of the Here Commission. In the summer of 2020, I attended a series of meetings regarding the establishment of a commission which would advocate and promote equity, access, diversity, social justice, safety, and respect for all members of the San Gabriel community. From those meetings, the Here Commission was established in October of 2020 by consent of this body. Over the last three years, the Commission has recommended and executed a broad range of activities, amongst them that city council agendas be translated into Mandarin, Vietnamese, and Spanish, the development of a mental wellness expo, which first took place in October of 2022, partnering with LA vs. Hate, Stop the Hate, and the Asian Youth Center to support their activities. In February of this year, the Commission introduced a recommendation to the city council for the creation of a public safety and inclusion program supporting the LGBTQ+ community to be called "All Are Welcome." The consensus from council members was that the initiative should be more inclusive and that the Commission should submit a revised proposal. That's all fair, but before the Commission had sufficient time to respond, the city council put forth a resolution to dissolve the entire Commission. Council members, if you are genuinely, genuinely interested in considering a revised plan to "All Are Welcome," then why would you not have provided the Commission the opportunity to do so? But this body has not done that. So what's really going on here? Surely, surely this isn't about an effort to silence and marginalize members of the LGBTQ+ community in San Gabriel, is it? That would brand San Gabriel as a community that only provides lip service to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The decisions the city council makes this evening shall have broad implications and send a clear message as to what type of community San Gabriel is. I therefore urge you to leave the Here Commission intact as it is. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeanne Raya.
Good evening, Mayor Wu and council. Sometimes I think I've been here too long. I have seen the arc of discrimination and othering in the city since I was a child. Schools were segregated. My father ran for council and was threatened. Chen Hohiao ran for council and was sued. You know, when are we going to reach that point where we are actually living in present times? You have had opportunities to be a leader. Each of you has had an opportunity to speak for those who do not have a voice in our community. Please do not squander it. Walk away from this proposal. There is nothing good that will come of it, except disappointment to those who have supported you and granted you the privilege to sit on this dais. You may show your humanity by being angry, maybe you're hurt, but you know, your responsibility is to put that aside and to rise above your personal feelings and act with respect for the voices in the community. Options? There are no options here. You do not have the right to barter with the voices of this community. Unless you think that some voices are coming from outside the city of San Gabriel, please remember, we live in community with others all around us. We have neighbors. Hate and discrimination do not recognize municipal borders. Please don't squander this opportunity to be leaders in the bigger, broader community. Let our city be a model for the courage to welcome and respect all. If you need to learn something, hey, there's a whole room full of people here who will help you understand the issues. It is not about taking photos, and it's not about writing fancy proclamations for the month of this or the month of that. It's about getting down and doing the hard work to create an inclusive community. That means it's not about you, it's about all of us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Erlinda Romo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Please vote yes on option 7A5. Leave the Here Commission as is. Democracies work best when there is participation with the citizenry and there is dialogue. The Here Commission has been a vital part of making San Gabriel a better place since its creation, three years ago. With five commissioners, two student ambassadors, amplifying the involvement of the San Gabriel stakeholders, the creation of a human relations committee will diminish the role of the citizenry. The council's actions tonight should maintain the Here Commission and promote people being involved in local government. The removal will be... if you vote to diminish and to get rid of the Commission, you will remove the voice of seven individuals. That is a step backwards. Thank you.
The next speaker is Florencio Briones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Florencio Briones, and I am the president of the United Democrats of the San Gabriel Valley, representing Democrats across the San Gabriel Valley, including here within the city of San Gabriel. And tonight, I'm reading a letter on behalf of my organization. You have a copy in front of you already. In 2020, when the San Gabriel City Council created the Human Equity Access and Relations Commission, we celebrated alongside you. Hate attacks against the Asian-American and Pacific-Inder community were growing, and you took a bold stand by creating the Here Commission to advance and advocate for equity, access, diversity, social justice, safety, mutual appreciation, increased cultural competency, positive intergroup relations, and respect for all members of the San Gabriel community. At that time, a councilwoman stated, quote, "An outside perspective has value. If other cities decide to adopt our ordinance, we will assist them. This can be a blueprint for other cities." The Here Commission immediately got to work, recommending that all city staff in all departments and at all levels attend implicit bias training. Mayor and members of the city council attended training sessions. A councilwoman stated then, quote, "As the city evolves, we should too. The training is very important so that we continue on a path to serve our city equitably and with respect for all." The Commission organized mental health fairs, guest speakers, and an annual work plan for the Here Commission. The work plan outlined the areas of focus for the Commission, as well as projects and trainings. With all the hard work and wonderful initiatives the Here Commission has brought forward, how is it that we're now at a point that the city council is considering dissolving the Here Commission? We're at a moment in time where hate crimes are once again increasing. AAPI hate is on the rise, anti-Latino hate is on the rise, and most pointedly, anti-LGBTQ hate crimes have skyrocketed. Only yesterday, a 60-year-old man was arrested after making a bomb threat against the Trans-Latina Coalition, a transgender Latinx organization with offices in Los Angeles and in nearby Almaty, my hometown. Hate crimes are at a 21-year-high in Los Angeles County, increasing by 18% in 2022, rising from 790 to 929, the highest since 1031 recorded in 2001. The work towards a more just and equitable society has not run its course. Advisory bodies like the Here Commission are valuable assets that are needed more than ever. They bring valuable, necessary perspectives that can in turn lead to more robust policies that create a better community for all. Tonight, the United Democrats of the San Gabriel Valley respectfully ask you to reject item 7A and allow the Here Commission to continue its work. To the San Gabriel community, we stand in solidarity with you and support to the Here Commission. We thank you for participating in the democratic process by voicing your opinions to your elected representatives. Regardless...
He taps up.
I have one final comment. Regardless of tonight's outcome, we will continue to work towards a more just and equitable society. La lucha sigue, and in the immortal words of Cesar Chavez, si se puede. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michelle Brenhog.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Michelle Brenhog. I'm a San Gabriel resident of 10 years and the mother of two young children who currently go to SGUSD schools. I'm also currently the vice chair of the Here Commission. First, I want to start out by saying that I'm really proud to be a San Gabriel resident. This city and you all have been doing amazing things for this city. And one of the greatest things that I'm proud of is the creation of the Here Commission, of getting the opportunity to come alongside and collaborate, to see that the city was open to hear from people within the community and collaborate on issues of equity, access, and inclusion. This Commission was born out of protest and activism. There was and is still a need to help amplify marginalized voices who currently do not have much influence, and to make sure that these voices are given as much thought and consideration as other, more influential voices. And I think we on the Here Commission are continuing to try to do that. There are many strengths right now in the Here Commission that I believe will be lost if you decide to dissolve it or even replace it with two council members. Currently on the Commission, we have a professor in family and educational studies. We have a practicing doctor of medicine who delivers babies. We have somebody who works in DEI for a large public agency. We have somebody who has a lot of expertise and experience in nonprofits and communication. And then you have me, who's been trained and has had a lot of experience in both engineering and walking with people through some of their most difficult moments. In addition to this varied perspective and expertise, we have also had the willingness to do the practical work of organizing information, connecting the city with community organizations, coordinating events, and engaging residents on behalf of the city, and doing it for free. Do I think the city will have the same quality of events, conversations, and engagement if the Here Commission is dissolved? if the Here Commission is dissolved? I don't, and I'm not sure that anybody else can agree with that or would disagree with that. And my last point to you is that, as you can see in this council chambers right now, people are watching. The residents of the city are watching, and specifically, the younger generation. From what I've seen from these younger, wonderful people is that they value authenticity. They have a lot less patience with political drama and misuse of power. And I'm hopeful for our future, no matter what is decided tonight, but I hope that you guys will decide the right thing.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Florence Simpson.
Hello. This started with a sticker. A simple sticker for businesses to display their support for LGBTQIA+ community and create welcoming spaces. The sticker was developed by the Here Commission with the input from the community and support of city staff. As part of their annual work plan that was approved by this very city council, it was based on a survey of residents who indicated a need for safe and welcoming spaces for the city, in the city, for the LGBTQI-plus residents. I'm one of those residents. I'm one of those residents who filled out that survey and asked for safe and inclusive spaces. I have never felt safe or welcoming enough to walk down any street in San Gabriel holding my wife's hand. I have lived here since 1998, and I can't tell you of a single event that was to support the LGBTQ+ community. So how is it that after all the great work that the Here Commission has done, that the council is recommending for it to be dissolved? We're here because of this sticker. The notion that the work of the Here Commission can be taken on by the council, by the city council or the city staff is not only unrealistic, but it's a lie. The Here Commission, as you just heard, has five highly qualified volunteer commissioners, a Harvard-trained physician, a DEI-certified justice fellow, a project manager that's done consulting work for the American Cancer Society, a Harvey Mudd engineer, and a department chair for the East LA College. Their work is vital. It cannot be replaced and must continue. Please listen to the people that you serve. Open up your hearts. Hear what we are saying. I offer each of you a sticker. We have, we actually ran out of these, but I'll offer you a sticker. We'll print more, okay? For you to show your support for the LGBTQI-plus community and for the Here Commission and for the mission that it was created for. I urge you to do what is right, and the only thing that is acceptable is for you to vote for option number five. Do nothing there my maintaining full operation of the Here Commission as it currently in its existing capacity. That's the only option that is available because the actions that made you come to this decision are not equitable, they are not fair, and in a lot of ways, it's turned into, unfortunately, a conversation of gaslighting. I don't need to tell you what that definition is, but I'm here to ask you to do the right thing. Our city deserves better, our residents deserve better, the Here Commission and the city of San Gabriel deserves better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Isaac Chan.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Isaac Chan, and unfortunately, I did not have the privilege of being on the Here Commission. I wasn't old enough. Because last year, when they were trying out for youth admissions officers, you had to be 16 years or older. My birthday was in July, and I was still 15. But that's testament to the work it's still doing right now. And I want to focus on the apparent grievances that have been levied against this truly excellent commission. Let's start with first, a lie. I've heard in the online comments that apparently it wasn't unanimous. That doesn't change the purpose of the Here Commission. I fear instead, our council members have. Let's move on to the second part. An accusation that the Here Commission is grooming children. Now, you heard in last month's Cali Council meeting that the two student admissions officers or student representatives went up with their own free accord to speak on this issue. In fact, I'm here. Is that any proof that we're being groomed, we're being controlled, we're being manipulated anyway? And finally, I want to touch on one incident, because it's been said time and time again that the Here Commission has somehow overstepped its authority. Maybe that's true, but the only thing people have been able to point towards is one incident regarding stickers. Is that enough to null and void a commission which has done such excellent work as the Mental Health Wellness Expo and has elected two of my fellow students to represent them? But I fear that the, I fear that the council members nonetheless do not hear their citizens. And I know that in the world of politics, it can often be easy to get into groupthink and to get into harsh hatefulness. But the people here today aren't advocating for some political ideology, they're advocating for their lives. And before you finally say that the Here Commission is unnecessary and that it has outlasted its purpose, I have one question to pose to you. Is the Here Commission meant to resolve financial issues? If that's the case, you can throw it away once the budget is balanced. But no, the Here Commission is an ever-evolving tool to promote diversity and prosperity across San Gabriel. When does that tool become obsolete? Never. Which is why I am urging the council to consider that they should reject this proposal and move forward. Because unfortunately, I can already see the glares of a few council members who have heard this opinion more than a dozen times. But that's your responsibility as elected officials in this city. You have to own up to your mistakes and to understand when the citizens speak out and demand action.
The next speaker is Liliana Simpson-Castaneda.
Good evening, City Council Members. Last year, as I was walking to fifth period, I noticed something colorful sitting in a trash can. It was one of the pride flags. The Gender and Sexuality Alliance, then run by Violet Wang, who sent in a comment today, had put up around the campus in support of Pride Month. My name is Liliana Simpson-Castaneda, and I'm a high school junior at Gaberlino, and I'm here to ask the City Council not to dissolve the Human Equity Access and Relations Commission. The Here Commission's fight for diversity and equity when it comes to LGBTQ rights is a necessity. When gay is still used as an insult, when queer people are still afraid to come out, and when flags representing the queer community are toned down and thrown in the trash, the fight for LGBTQ rights is still a necessity. When LGBTQ people know they are accepted, it is automatically easier to live their lives. Knowing there are places in your community where you won't be harassed, demeaned, or bullied is liberating. One of my close friends is on the commission, Aaron Situ, and I'm so proud of the work he's done for the community. This commission is helping to make San Gabriel a more inclusive place. Its survival will undoubtedly make this community, our community, stronger. The notion that a commission who is at the whims of this city council could somehow be bullying city council members is malicious. The reality is that anti-LGBTQ sentiment, and as an extension, bigotry, is shameful. Holding representatives accountable is exactly what we stand here to do, because in case the city council members haven't noticed, most of us are here to speak in favor of the Here Commission. People like myself have grown up around LGBTQ members. My mother is Florence Simpson. My mother is Leticia Castaneda. My cousins are Christian Castaneda and Natalia Castaneda, and all of us have grown up and love this city. But the one thing we will never allow this city to do is demean the rights of its people. And as city council members, it is against your oath to go against the words of a majority of the people of this city and as an extension, this county and this state. So I ask you to save the Here Commission, because all people, regardless of race, ethnicity, sexuality, and gender, belong in San Gabriel. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Farber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Before I start, I just really want to say that these are the people that the Here Commission makes a difference in. Their voices, their voices and their passion indicates that there's a need in this city for us to have greater levels of equity, diversity, and inclusion. They're our future, and the Here Commission responds to them. I'm a parent and a professional that works and lives in the city of San Gabriel. I've been here for 18 years, and the Here Commission is the first time in my life that I've seen a real vested interest in creating equity, inclusion, and diversity in our city in a public way, in a way that promotes their voices and the voices of the other people you've heard. You know, I find youth engagement and youth leadership to be essential in building values of mutual appreciation and cultural competency. We can learn from our young people. Our young people carry the voice and embody the principles of the Here Commission. The work of the Here Commission has included actions to support mental wellness, AAPI awareness, acknowledgement of San Gabriel's Native American Indigenous community, the city's first mandatory implicit bias training for all city employees, and transparency from the police department regarding racial and identity profiling. I support public leaders whose actions demonstrate that they believe in the values of diversity, equity, inclusion, and mutual appreciation, and are willing to work hand-in-hand with community stakeholders in an open and transparent manner to embed those values in the community. The work of the Here Commission gives me hope that we can move forward as a city. I urge you to vote no on the ordinance to dissolve the Here Commission and support the option to retain it in its current form and really show us that you are the public leaders that listen to us, the voters of this city. Thank you.
The next comment is from George Herrera Avila. Our next speaker is Leticia Castaneda. The next speaker is Ariel Bustamante.
Good evening. My name is Ariel Bustamante. I work at the Los Angeles LGBT Center, where I oversee the national training, coaching, and technical assistance programs RISE, Out for Safe Schools, and Out for Safe Spaces, which empower caregivers and providers across the country with the knowledge and skills they need to implement best practices with LGBTQ+ youth. In 2008, 15-year-old Lawrence King, a multiracial, Black, former foster youth, and gender nonconforming teen, was murdered by his classmate in Oxnard. Lawrence had asked a boy at his school to be his Valentine. The boy then returned to school later that week with a firearm, which he would use to kill Lawrence. Then in 2010, our community lost Seth Walsh, a 13-year-old young man who, after years of persistent school-based harassment based on his sexual orientation and gender expression, died by suicide. Seth's mother, Wendy, advocated relentlessly to have Seth's public school respond, but those pleas were left unanswered. This past month, we follow the life and death of Nex Benedict, a 16-year-old non-binary Indigenous youth from Oklahoma who experienced severe bullying and harassment at their high school, including a violent assault the day before they also died by suicide. Nex's death represents the failure of educators and elected officials who sought to use him and our community as a punching bag so they could advance their harmful ideology. These stories are not new, and they are not isolated. From a small business owner in Lake Arrowhead being gunned down due to her visible support of the LGBTQ+ community, to a terrified parent calling me about their elementary school child who was assaulted on campus by another student because of their sexual orientation and faith, to a transgender woman struggling to remain housed due to a violent neighbor and a negligent landlord, to even our LGBT Center being threatened. We continue to encounter case after case of LGBTQ+ people being targeted. This anti-LGBTQ+ movement is threatening the safety of our most vulnerable community members everywhere, from Oklahoma to Glendale and now, San Gabriel, my backyard. As a queer Latina who grew up in the San Gabriel Valley, I know firsthand how important it is that LGBTQ+ children and youth feel safe, supported, and know that the adults in their lives, especially the elected leaders like you, are there for them. Suicide is the leading cause of death for young people, the second-leading cause of death for young people ages 10 to 24, and LGBTQ+ youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. This is a matter of life and death, because we also know that when LGBTQ+ youth have one supportive adult in their life, that can make all the difference. Thank you.
Our next comment comes from George Herrera Avila.
Let's do it again. Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council, City Manager, it's okay to make mistakes. It's okay to apologize. It's okay to be wrong sometimes, but like myself, I was wrong earlier. I came here before I was supposed to, so I apologize. I'm vulnerable. I respect where Councilmember Menchaca and her religious beliefs. I can understand where you came from when you made the comments and made the action item that led us to have this, this forum that we're having right now, right? But the people have spoken, the people are speaking up, and it's okay to reconsider. I really hope you do. Just not understanding or not supporting a particular measure or matter because of whatever religious beliefs we might have, I don't think that makes us the wrong person or a bad person. But the solution should never be to disband or dissolve something that, like the Here Commission. We have done so much great work, and you have acknowledged that as well, and I appreciate that. So please reconsider. There's so much work that we have ahead of us. Stuff that I pushed for was accessible sidewalks, walkable sidewalks, that's something that the commission could address. Earlier, one of my friends came up to talk about an issue about having, to deal with the city and being rejected because they want to open a facility, a medical facility on the first floor. There's just stuff that we can have the commission look into, all right? This is the platform where we have for people and residents can come up and speak out about accessibility issues such as these. We have a lot of policies and procedures or old, old measures that we should be reconsidering. That's something that the commission can help out with. I do think that there's a lot of work ahead of the commission. I do not think that it's time to shut it down. I do feel that it is time to support it. I think that everything happens for a reason, and this is a learning opportunity for all of us. I hope, and I really, from the bottom of my heart, hope that we can reconsider this, that all the council members reconsider this. And let's continue with the commission. They're doing really good work, and I feel that it's now the opportunity to have more people be involved. A lot of people, there's a lot of outcry that a lot of people want to be involved. This is a perfect opportunity to have people involved. Why shut it down when people want to be involved? And let's respect one another. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vicky Goto.
Good evening, Mayor Wu and City Council. My name is Vicky Goto. I'm the Chair of the Here Commission. You've heard from me already. You've heard from our residents. You've heard from parents. You've heard from students. You've heard from our community partners, and we have letters of support from a number of community leaders, equity and social justice organizations, elected officials from neighboring cities, the county, the state, the federal government, and I brought copies for all of you. The City Council has an important decision to make tonight. Thank you. What is going to be the city's path forward? Is San Gabriel going to be a vibrant, thriving, interconnected community of the future? Or is it going to be an outdated, backwards, old relic of the past? I urge the City Council to vote no on dissolving the Here Commission. And I want to thank everyone here from the bottom of my heart who have shown up and spoken up and shared their very personal stories. I really appreciate the support, and I'm here to support you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Lemack.
My husband and I have lived in San Gabriel for 15 years. We started the Neighborhood Watch Police Group on our 300 block of Segovia Avenue. I am a graduate of the first San Gabriel Police Citizens Academy. I have an investment in this community. So much has been said tonight. I'm moved by what I've heard. We live in such tough times, we hardly agree on much of anything anymore. But about two hours ago, you all stood up and you put your hands on your chest, and we did a pledge of allegiance, and you uttered your belief in liberty and justice for all. And the way I live my life, equity and social justice for all isn't too far from that. We are never done with the pursuit of equity and social justice. And I see some of you feel like, well, I've heard enough about this tonight. That concerns me. You have a job to do, which is not move forward your personal opinions and the way you live your life. We all respect how everybody does that, but you're obligated to represent the people who put you in these seats. You guys are privileged to be in these seats. Very little we can agree on, except last week for 20 minutes or half an hour, we all looked up in the sky and we saw a magical eclipse, and for a minute, we stopped fighting with each other long enough to say, wow, that's really awesome. I think also maybe we can agree on liberty and justice for all and that we can agree on equity and social justice for all in our city, always moving forward. There's a sign, and we're looking at it for two and a half hours. San Gabriel, city with a mission. What is the mission certainly should be to move forward. What concerns me in conclusion is that I'm not sure that anything you guys have heard tonight or anything I say will make a difference. You came in believing a certain something, and regardless of what we've all stood here to say, we're not moving you. You have feet in the sand, and the decision is made. I hope that's not the case. I hope that's not the case. I would like to believe in liberty and justice and equity and social justice for all of us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Powers.
I'm an independent college counselor who supports LGBTQ+ students in San Gabriel, USD. Please do not close the excellent Here Commission. The Here Commission does good work, as others have shared, and ending it now raises enormous red flags about the city's stance on misogyny and transphobia. In this chamber at the March 19th City Council meeting, Civil Services Commissioner George Carney submitted a public comment, which the clerk read aloud while he listened. In the comment, Commissioner Carney calls a commission of five women hysterical, shrill, overwhelmed, obsessed, over-important, nasty bullies. Tonight, he submitted another statement calling women semi-hysterical, showing that the city's commissioner does not understand his own misogynistic statements. In a phone call, City HR confirmed to me that because Commissioner Carney announced himself as a civil services commissioner, the March 19th statement was made in the capacity of a city official. Last week, you gave a new appointment to Commissioner Carney, who will now serve on the City Planning Commission. City HR also confirmed Commissioner Cheryl Cabot's transphobic March 12th op-ed on ColoradoBoulevard.net was published in an official capacity. So as a city commissioner, she said the city's youth have proclivities and suggested a forced outing policy for the city. In 2022, the city offered three voluntary implicit bias trainings to prevent incidents like this. In a public records request, I learned that neither Commissioner Carney nor Commissioner Cabot attended a training. In fact, only two city commissioners attended a training, and they were both from the Here Commission. The trainings should be required. Misogyny harms San Gabriel. Transphobia harms San Gabriel. HR tells me the only people in the city who can hold volunteer commissioners accountable for official statements is the City Council. So in San Gabriel, do we hold commissioners accountable for hate speech in public statements? City Council, it appears that you are about to terminate an entire commission of five women, a commission you oversee, just a week after you gave an appointment to a male commissioner who publicly attacked them with misogynistic statements. Please denounce misogyny, denounce transphobia, hold off on your decision to shutter the Here Commission until you can address these urgent administrative concerns. Thank you.
The next speaker is Maria Du.
I'd like to start by thanking the City Council for taking public comment on Agenda Item 7. My name is Maria. I am a queer daughter of Vietnamese refugees residing currently in LA and consider San Gabriel part of my wider community as an Asian-American. I'm also a community college educator and an organizer for the LA LGBT Center. Frankly, the creation of the Here Commission was long overdue, but knowing that the city has taken action to make our community more inclusive and representative of its multi-ethnic, multilingual, and LGBT members felt like a move in a positive direction, better late than ever. Now, like I said, I'm not only Vietnamese, but also queer. Having spaces that are dedicated and centers the LGBT community will be beneficial for all because being queer does not exist in a vacuum, at least not in my experience. My queerness informs my experience as a Vietnamese person, and my Asian-ness informs my experience as a queer person. And if we are to be truly inclusive, we need to think more expansively. If racism is not acceptable here in our community, why should homophobia? Councilmember Denise Menchaca's criticism against the inclusion of the LGBT community in the All Are Welcome program goes against what it means to say all are welcome. When we make spaces safe for the LGBT community and their allies, it benefits everyone else. With all due respect, the discomfort you may feel towards centering the LGBT community neglects how vulnerable young queer and trans students are in schools compared to their cis-het peers. Our world has historically centered the cis-het community, and yet no questions are asked about why that is normalized. And if we are to think about what should indeed be centered, the City Council should center their constituents' diverse backgrounds, not the personal beliefs of its members. As an educator, I'd like to encourage you to lean into your discomfort towards the LGBT community as an opportunity to learn. What biases do you hold due to your positionality? If you've been discriminated due to your many identities in the past, how can you show more empathy towards people who are being discriminated now? If we want to ensure the mental and physical well-being of all students, we need the Here Commission to continue doing their work, and this work, if done right, should be intersectional in nature and should include voices from queer communities of color who are often the most marginalized. Lastly, I want to share that I grew up Catholic as well, and being Catholic is not an excuse for being homophobic. If I recall, Jesus spent His time with the most marginalized, so by that logic and teaching, you should do the same, Councilmember Menchaca. Please support Action 5 and do not terminate the Here Commission. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Joey Espinoza Hernandez.
My name is Joey Espinoza Hernandez. My pronouns are they/them/they're's and eh/eeh, and I'm proud to serve as the Director of Policy and Community Building for the Los Angeles LGBT Center, the largest provider of services to the LGBTQ+ community in the world. As we've seen over 400 anti-LGBTQ bills being introduced in state houses across the country, as we see ballot initiatives and legislation attempting to roll back the protections of our LGBTQ+ community, and seeing school board policies being introduced and adopted attacking transgender students, the work of the Here Commission is needed more than ever. As a resident of San Gabriel Valley, I know what it feels like to feel fear for my physical and emotional safety as I walk down the street. And so this is why the work of the Here Commission is more critical than ever. I oppose the termination of the Here Commission and urge all of the Councilmembers to do the same. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackie Calvache.
Thank you to the City Council for the opportunity to comment on Agenda Item 7. As a former student of San Gabriel, having attended Gabriela High School, Jefferson Middle School, and Coolidge Elementary, I would like to strongly oppose the termination of the Here Commission. Learning about the establishment of the Here Commission in recent years made me feel incredibly hopeful for the positive direction San Gabriel is moving towards for not only our community members, but for our schools and students. Having community members serving to directly advise the City Council is necessary to reflect and uplift the needs of our community. I really wish the Here Commission existed during my time as a student. I remember witnessing transphobia and homophobia throughout my schooling, which impacted my own personal journey as a queer person, making it feel unsafe for me to come out. Having openly queer identifying educators was rare in their treatment vial. The motion to terminate this commission by Denise Menchaca after the proposal of the All Are Welcome program is a step back to the progress this commission has fought for and feels to me like an action rooted in fear and homophobia. Please support Action 5, do not terminate the commission, and respect all community voices. Thank you.
The next speaker is Katie McMahon.
My name's Katie McMahon. My pronouns are they/them/they're's, and I'm an employee of the Los Angeles LGBT Center. Before I started at the center, for several years, I probably served as a teacher in schools in LA County, and I was openly queer and openly non-binary as a teacher, and I did that for a reason, so I could show visibility to my students. In my current capacity at the center, I lead an initiative called Out for Safe Schools, and the Out for Safe Schools program helps educators create visible allyship, support, and understanding for LGBTQ+ students across school campuses all across the whole country. So I'm here to speak to ask you to choose Option 5 and continue the Here Commission. The Trevor Project, which is a suicide prevention organization specifically for LGBTQ+ youth, they have a finding, a recent finding, and it's super alarming. Over a third of LGBTQ+ youth doubt they'll reach the age of 35. So that as like somebody who, I'm 38 and an adult and openly queer, that is shocking to me, and I think it should be shocking to all of us. Systemic challenges like anti-LGBTQ+ legislation and violence against specifically trans and non-binary students, trans people of color, compound their struggles. But hope exists. It exists in the power of affirming communities, affirming cities, to transform the lives of LGBTQ+ people. So studies reveal that LGBTQ+ youth thrive in inclusive environments, and they experience better mental health and every kind of health outcomes. Regardless of religious beliefs or any type of personal beliefs, every resident of San Gabriel should be supported and included. So amidst pervasive anti-LGBTQ+ rhetoric nationwide, it's crucial for elected officials to vocalize that all are welcome here. Inclusive policies, inclusive spaces, and inclusive communities, it's not just an ideal. These are lifelines for people of the LGBTQ+ community. So let's please ensure the safety of everybody in San Gabriel, and please don't turn your back on the LGBTQ+ community now when we need you the most. Thank you.
Our last public comment speaker is Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Thank you. To our City Council, to everyone who is here, the outpouring of support that has manifested in public comments, the formation of a community coalition, support from nonprofits, government bodies, and elected leaders has been incredible. I particularly want to thank the Coalition of San Gabriel Community Residents, my husband, Dr. Felix Nunez among them, who have spent many hours attempting to bridge dialogue with those driving this course of action and to prevent an unwarranted and regrettable action. The Here Commission was not founded by a single City Council member. It is the vision of a community of people, and I was one of those lead community members who established a base of support in 2020. David Localeo actually came up with the name for the commission during one of our Smith Park meetings at the height of the COVID shutdown. Jason Poo and Denise Menchaca were the two Councilmembers who aligned with that community vision and worked to ensure that an ordinance was developed and brought to council to establish the commission. I've worked very hard to educate City Councilmembers of the need to build community support, and since being appointed and named Chair in 2020, I have strived to ensure that we continue to remain true to the purpose and goals as outlined by the ordinance while not losing sight of the turbulent and frightening circumstances that awaken many to the need for this commission. The All Are Welcome program was the catalyst for the beginning of the last six weeks, but the Here Commission had been quietly performing incredible work for three years before it was presented. The Here Commission discussed issues ranging from digital equity to climate change, from mental health to racial profiling. We conducted a community survey and appointed two youth ambassadors. Our commission has focused attention on a variety of groups and issues, and I am extremely proud of our work and my leadership when I was Chair. The need for the Here Commission is as present now as it was when it was created. The lived experience of most of us in this room tell us that this is true. Each of us holds privilege in some situation by virtue of being part of the majority of Each of us holds privilege in some situation by virtue of being part of the majority or having power. I have chosen to use not only my lived experience as a Black female in a society that has made me part of a marginalized group, but also in circumstances where my identity as an upper-middle-class, cisgender, heterosexual, married woman provides me with privilege to affect change. I hope to continue to do this as a member of the Here Commission, but intend to continue the fight for equity and inclusion regardless of today's decision. Thank you.
Do we have any more speaker card?
That was the last speaker card.
Okay.
Just kidding.
So we have one more?
We have one more speaker card from Alan K. Chan.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak and addressing the council. My name's Alan Chan, and I'm a resident of Arcadia and a board member of the PFLAG San Gabriel Valley Asian Pacific Islander Chapter. I want to first of all thank and congratulate Honorable Mayor John Woo for his appointment as mayor. And I understand that, you know, you're passionate about improving the city's infrastructure, improving resident safety, engaging with the business community. And so, you know, you're always kind of looking to increase cohesion within San Gabriel Valley and the community, enhancing the city's reputation as a business-friendly kind of city. And so I spoke about that two city council meetings ago and, you know, and how the Here Commission can actually help that, right? And so, you know, telling businesses that they shouldn't welcome LGBTQ customers into their business is antithetical to business, being a business-friendly environment. And so, you know, I want to, you know, kind of offer that, you know, with this commission, it will help improve the cohesion of the city. I look forward to your continued mayorship and helping the San Gabriel citizens feel like they belong. And so, yeah. To Vice Mayor Denise Manchaca and Councilmember John Harrington, I understand one of you started your career in public service in trying to, you know, save a park for kids. And, you know, part of that is, you know, belief and the power of faith and, you know, giving a moral compass to protecting children. And, you know, let's talk about the moral compass, right? I know city civic life isn't supposed to be religious, but, you know, there's supposed to be a separation of church and state. But let me read a verse from the Bible, specifically Matthew 25, verse 45. He will reply, "Truly I tell you, whatever you did, not for the least of me, you did not do for me." Essentially, what that means is that, you know, we should be caring for everybody. And so even Pope Francis said, you know, "We hope to find a way to help the father and mother stand by their LGBTQ children." To that end, I invite any of the city council members to visit the PFLAG San Gabriel Valley Asian Pacific Islander Chapter meeting anytime. We meet the fourth Sunday of every month in Ahambra to learn, support, love, and advocate for LGBTQ family members and neighbors. Councilman Tony Ding, you've held many positions in nonprofits and PACs within the community. One of them is the president of the Asian American Advocacy Alliance that includes youth program sponsorships to teach high school students to the importance of political process, local, state, and federal level. At the previous city council meeting, you saw youth ambassadors doing just that, participating in the city's politics by joining the Here Commission and helping make recommendations to the city council, telling the, you know, telling the Here Commission that they matter and it's the youth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, Councilmember Chan. Okay, so now, so now I close the public comments. And before we start with the council discussion, I wanted to call it recess for five minutes. So that's come back at 9:16.
So we're okay? Okay, now the meeting, we resume the meeting in a time at 9:19 PM. When the commission was established, it was for the purpose of addressing all human relations issues. This commission was never about a single issue. This commission was never about only LGBTQ plus issues. However, commissioners have taken upon themselves to unilaterally define their mission. They embarked on their own campaign of changing narratives, manipulation of facts, the deliberate spreading of misinformation, and character attacks on all who voiced opposing perspectives. Although the initial intentions had good merit, it's clear that the dissolution is an opportunity to streamline and reassign staff resources. The city of San Gabriel, like every other city of similar size, will continue to address diversity, equity, and inclusion without a Here Commission. This is not mutually exclusive. Staff and council will continue to build strong communities by listening to diverse voices. That has always been our mission. There is no room for hate. I emphasize again that I am an ally for the LGBTQ plus community. Thank you.
Please keep your silence. That's, okay, so who will be the next? Is Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your comments, Vice Mayor. Being on council the longest, I think I've been through the most contentious issues here for all the people who've been here. I've been on several hard decisions. Decision some, for me, I always try to, I do listen to, no matter what it wants to think, I do listen to each comment. I do appreciate the courage it takes to get up here and address your council. We are your representatives. We represent everybody, and that includes not everybody that's just in this room, but everybody. And that's what we are elected to do. We're not elected to represent whoever gives us the most money, whoever is the loudest, whoever. I mean, there's a lot of reasons that people will do different things. And to me, hearing what people are saying here is very reminiscent of what I said back when the commission was founded by the council, which I went back to some of my notes from then. I keep a lot of my notes. And a couple of my comments, I think, are ringing true tonight, which is, I said way back in October 21, my opinion was that a commission was not what this council needed. It was a committee, subcommittee, standing committee, whatever we want to call it, ad hoc. As an issue comes up, we have a couple council members address it. They go into deeper detail than would be warranted at a city council meeting and then bring it back to council for discussion. So if you see the accomplishments that the Here Commission has done, some of those were already on the radar of the council. We'd already talked to city management about. So these are accomplishments, yes. Would they have happened without the Here Commission? I think so. A lot of them would have and probably still will, a lot will. Because like I said, we represent the entire community. We don't represent one person or one group. Everyone up here represents everyone, regardless of what the rhetoric may be. We all represent everyone. And so I did see this, I foresaw an issue where this commission, if impaneled, would eventually become political. They would pick political issues, which my whole thing is to try and get rid of political issues, national political issues, out of our council. We're here to pave...
Please.
We can pave roads. We can, you know, make our sewers great. We can, you know, make this a great place to live, encourage business. But to me, I see the more we go down this road, the more divisive it gets. And to say it's not political is naive, I mean, or a lie. That's the only two things that can be. If you, the laughter proves it. It's either naive or you have an agenda that you're not trying to put out there, a political agenda. And anytime I've ever said to this council, someone's ever said, "No, you're being political." It's like, no, whenever there's two opinions, that's politics. That's the truth. And I think I had a discussion with a couple members here, and everything is political whether you want to believe it or not. The air we breathe is political because it's taxed. So you can keep interrupting and you can keep talking, but you had your opportunity to speak. It's now my opportunity. And I represent people, just as your opinion. I get emails from lots and lots of people. I weigh a lot of these emails. I listen to people. That doesn't mean I have to agree, just like a lot of people here won't agree with me. That's perfectly fine. And if you believe that that's the system we live in, where your representatives represent you whether you agree with them or not, that is what we, that's... that, that is what we, that's the system we live in, but believe me, I don't even agree with some of the decisions I've made in the past, so yes, I will disagree even with myself eventually, and that's the reality of it. But if you're not willing to, to speak your mind freely, without worry about what someone else might say about that, then we have failed as, as a nation. We've failed as a people. I don't have to agree with anyone in this room, and no one in this room has to agree with me, and that's the beauty of it. But I am charged with making a decision. That's one of the, one of the duties we're all up here to do, is to make a decision. I base my decision on what I think is best for the entire community, through, through judgment, that I, I take in all of these facts. I am, I mean, I see a lot of people out in the community, I ask a lot of questions. I ask people, you know, and, and I think even the here commission, their own data will, 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 will bear out. People, the, the public were asked, what do you think of the here commission? They would say, what's the here commission? So this, this fact that a lot of people don't even know that it's there, shows that it's either doing a really good job, and we have a lot of, a lot of programs that are, that are so great they go unseen, or a lot of what they do is good, but not necessarily noticed. And I'd say, in my opinion, the council can take that on. We did it all the way up until twenty twenty one, and I think we can do it well after twenty twenty four. The council and staff are, are, are the drivers of these policies and the drivers of these issues. And let me be very clear, I was never in favor of this commission, and I just, I just don't think it's necessary in, in a city of our size, and I'll say this, just like I said in twenty twenty one, this was a solution looking for a problem, and we didn't have, I, I asked at the time, point me to the policies that are not inclusive in San Gabriel, point me to the people that are not inclusive, point me to the laws that are not inclusive, point me to the individual staff members that are not inclusive. Not a single person. That's great. Not a single, you can say that, but that doesn't make, something you say doesn't make it true. So my point was, we have all of this rhetoric, but there's nothing behind it. There is nothing in our city where someone could say, you know what, the city of San Gabriel has this policy, and it's excluding people. I said, show it to me, because then we'll change it. But, but that never happened. Show me our staff member that's, that's doing X, Y, and Z, that's, that's, that's chasing people away, or not being inclusive, or divisive, and that person will be sent to training, or that person will, can be terminated if it rises to that level. Not a single name was put forth. And so to me, once again, we're having an issue where it's a lot of rhetoric, and not a lot of evidence. This, this city is inclusive. It is very diverse, and I would say, I would value equality, which we have, over equity any day, because equity can be exploited. Equality cannot. If everybody is treated the same. Yeah, no, it's true. I mean, people don't want to hear the truth, and once you, you hear it, and you actually think about it, yeah, it, it's true. Equity can be exploited, equality cannot. If everyone's treated with equality, equity flows from that. They don't ever, don't ever, don't ever.
Sorry, we listened to you, please let us finish. Thank you.
When we, when we confuse equity and equality, or equate them, even though they have the same root word, we've done a dis, disservice to both. Equity comes from equality, and having accessible sidewalks is equality. That's not equity. That's equality. Equality, because everybody gets to use the sidewalks when they're accessible. That's, everybody's treated equally, we all have equal access, not equitable access. That's my point, is you can, you can, you can make these decisions and make these definitions, be whatever you want, but that's, that's why we did that pledge of allegiance, that, that is exactly what it means. It, it is equality. So I, I fully support, I, I fully support option one. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Harrington, and Councilmember Chan, please.
Yep. First of all, let me say, thank you all for coming. I mean, I want you to know that I have listened to all your comments, and really taken them seriously. Now, I think that, I mean, for purposes of, of this, this issue, an ad hoc committee would be the best use of our city resources. I mean, and I, I think that I would trust charitable organizations, like many of you are part of, to be the best way to do your advocacy and, and help in that way. But I also support the termination of. But that's my comment, but I, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm still want to listen to my colleagues and what they have to say, but, but that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chan, and Councilmember Ding, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's, really appreciate tonight, even said late night, that everybody's still here. So no matter you support or not support, that's meaning, I, my feeling, and I order the council member, it's care our city, care our the people, care our the, any group that feel like got hate, got, got the, like, feeling the fear. For me, I'm Christian, but I respect the L G B T Q, the group too. So, you know, everything, when you have the issue, for this time, for the here commission issue, I hope if we ideally to separate two issue. One is regarding the dissolve the commission, another one, it's regarding the L G B T Q. So that should be more ideally to think about it, because I have the, also here, there were some people, they maybe disagree the current commissioner to recommendation. They've even, I see the public comments, they say they feel, they're, they're feeling the fear, and it got some bullying. Okay. Original, when I get elected, I really agree the Kathy say, the Jason put experience, I have the same experience too. Okay. So I fully support it, have the, our, that time have the here commission too. So we want the inclusive diversity, we have to have the different kind of angle, the opinion. Even current the, here commission, I hope here commission also listen, people not agree to the, their, their plan. It should be listened to them. Right? So, so that's why I say that just to separate, okay? So it's, I think everybody, I, I feel both sides, everybody intention is good, to help our community. But what kind of way? What do we do? That's the, everybody different opinion too, like Councilmember Harrington say, okay, everybody even define sometimes a different angle too. So we should be understanding each other, and even like people disagree, they feel here commission, the purpose is reduce our community hate, we should provide more love. But why they feel right now this issue, they feeling their fear, they feeling that get the hate to them, attack through them, uh, some, like, uh, social media or something like that, we need to think about it too. We, we need to think about their side, right? We should be, if we called inclusive, we should be think of both sides, not the just one side. So, and the, so, uh, actually, right now, for, if, I, I hope maybe on my colleague, maybe for my, think about it, probably should we have the, like, some, like, uh, chance give to the here commission, to, like, we have the more communication? And the here commission should be also not the just listen one group the voice, should be listen the entire different voice. And I think the, also original, my feeling, that time, our whole council member, the direction, it's also like, want to do that too. We want to see everybody, even, actually, even like last time, the, my public comments, we have another issue need to think about it. L G B T Q, new immigration, they feel the fear, they feel discrimination. Even I just tell undocumented people, the immigration, they are feel fear, and, 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 uh, so, so they need a, they, they also have a human rights, we need to think about that too, right? The, we have the last month, it's a woman month, it's some, a lot of women still feel like they get the discrimination, like, uh, sub Asian hate, so we, like, uh, Black, uh, Black Lives Matter too, right? So we have to think about it, all this kind of scenario, to find the best way to let our community. But I, I really appreciate it will bring the, this kind of, I, I can say that today's, it's a really little bit controversy, the issue, but how can we find out the best way to listen all kind of group people? To, to then, we can make a decision to have a certain direction, to discuss the commission, want to dissolve or not. If we can, like, postpone another two weeks, okay, next council meeting? So listen the, the, the here commission, the, they are, I hope not the just, because current, I, reality, I just say, current maybe here commission, everybody, it's same mind. But I, I really appreciate the here commission, first things, I really appreciate they invite the one professor come to the, our city, have the seminar for the implicit bias. I learning a lot. I feel I'm, I'm a soft people, I already really respect the people, I don't have any bias. But after then, he gave to me the some test, then I find that I have bias too. I really have, you, you don't, you feel it's like you're good, have good things, you are right, you, you are right movement, you try help the this group people, but sometimes you forgot another people the voice. So we should be have another be people the voice to come our city. So that's why, that's my suggestion, it's not, hopefully not today, maybe give to the here commission some opportunity. So based on the, the, I see, it's, it's a, a recommendation, it's, I, number four, the recommendation, that's, I suggest it. Okay, that's my comment. Hopefully, today's, I, I still wish, no matter happen, whatever the result of after our council member, but I feel we, I think, based on that, the rest of council members say, we still try functional to help the, all the group people the voice. Okay, we, we can use the, our existing commissioner to do that too, okay? I, I feel it's, no matter the, what's the today's result, even all commission, the, this, even, uh, we still continue to have a here commission, we still need another different group of commission, even historical commission, community service commission, civic commission too, we, we can listen to their voice too. Okay. And another things I just want to voice out, I hear what there's some, uh, business owner and, and even city employee, but they don't want us, they want to open, they don't want to, like, come here to have public comments, but I want their voice to can listen. Okay. It, yeah, sounds like we are good movement to help, we say, we need to friendly with the L G B T Q, we have the sticker. But business owner that say, if I don't put on the sticker, the, the group people that want to support L G B T Q say, hey, you are not a friendly with the L G B T Q. They feel like they discrimination too. But, yeah, you can say that, but you need to listen their voice, you, you need to listen their side. So that's our implicit the bias in our, uh, the, the, the natural too, you know? So even I know some people, I feel they are discrimination, but they, they tell me they are not discrimination. I listen there. I want to listen, to listen everybody, to really let our historical city, city with a mission, and currently it's really multicultural, even like, uh, our Kathy, the, when, when she started, it's used the Chinese to say that. So I really appreciate, uh, I think here right now, today is the most, can, and it's the, the, not the just the Chinese speaker only, so I just, I don't use the, the, right now, the, want to save time, the, but I, I really like, just use the Chinese, what, the, the, just short comments, okay? We need the love, reduce the hate. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ding. Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. I would like to, I want to share a few points with my community and also my colleagues. Well, first of all, I really appreciate everyone's engagements on the topic that we discussed today, that is primary focus on the future of the here commission. So where to retain or dissolve it, the reason underlying our, you know, forthcoming decision. I want to clarify that I, as I work with my colleagues, that none of the member here discriminate or against the L G B T Q plus community. Today's discussion is driven by the dynamic of interactions and communication between the commissioners and the city council. And second, that regarding the O R welcome program, I would like to remind everyone that each council member possesses the freedom of make decision independently. So regardless of decision being made, it will be based on our commitment to fostering an inclusive and welcome community. There is no room and no tolerance for hate. And the discussion on whether to dissolve the commission should not be confused with the sticker program. And there is no direct relation between the decision on the sticker program and the fate of the here commission. As I spoke to one of the commissioner from here commission, and also several, you know, community leaders, that I share my thought about the sticker things, and when I have opened the dialogue, and I realize that actually this is great, because they understand, maybe there's some blind spot they don't see, and they have some good points I didn't see. So this is the, the beautiful things that we have a communication, we have a channel, a platform to do so. So let's get straightforward. After reviewing, you know, the here commissions meeting online, especially particularly that moment, that I realized the major issues that have brought us here today, today's debate, and we should really ask, you know, among our city council, that what does the here commission means to our city? And is it mandatory for city council to approve every proposal from our commissioners? So when council members hold opinions is different from those of the commissioners, what is the best way to resolve the difference, you know, cooperatively? And I regard every one of you and every commissioners as a my family member, and given the diverse backgrounds, I'm the first generation immigrant. This is pretty natural for us, that occasionally we disagree. However, the spirit of inclusive diversity of Cedar San Gabriel is our value to share, and I acknowledge the past contributions that here commissions as a detailed in our staff report. However, I believe there are some areas that for improvement. The commissioner should offer advice without dictating our action. For example, it was sometimes it's kind of confusing for me, that when our police chief was asked to present at the commission meeting, and they will be, he'll be interpedal, pedaled by the commissioners. And such matters should fall under the council's response, responsibility, as we oversee the quality of police work. If commissioners have concern about the law enforcement. If commissioners have concern about the law enforcement, this should be directed to us for further discussion and investigation. And that's why sometimes our role, elected official, council member and commissioners sometimes like overlap because that leading the council feeling like a subordinate commissioners. And we are obligated to follow the direction from the commission and subject to criticism if we diverge. That this blurring roles is the main point of today's debates and issue. So I would say, I mean, we may still have a lot of difference, but I would advocate an opportunity, just like Councilmember Ding, that to mend this relationship because always open the dialogues that we understand each other better. That really is a betterment for our city. And we should allow the here commissions to address this issue by setting new direction. And we should reclassifying, redefining their responsibility. So I would suggest to my colleagues that we should consider moving to number four, that to retain the here commissions, but ensure the clear guidelines are established for commissioners to follow. But thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
I don't have any further discussion. I think if we bring it in-house, just like everyone else does, and we can build, make it stronger, make sure that everyone is welcomed, their, their voices. We can work with partnerships like we've had before. These are issues, human relation issues are very sensitive and we need that expertise. So I'm going to move forward with option one. I'll make a motion to move forward with option one, which is to dissolve the here commission and replace it with an ad hoc subcommittee to address all human relations issues.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, can I repeat the motion again? I'm sorry, the number one? Okay. Okay, ad hoc subcommittee. And, okay.
Meaning it's the number one and number two, right?
No, actually, we have to make that clear.
I just said an ad hoc subcommittee. I mean, we can appoint later, we can have a later discussion. I know in the staff report, it refers to mental health services, homeless issues, LGBTQ plus and other, you mentioned immigration. And so we can have a later meeting to discuss how we're going to address those issues and make sure we, we have the expertise, we have the partners. There's so many partners here that we could be working with. So that's my motion.
Vice Mayor, so your, your motion is recommendation number two?
Number one and number two.
Oh, okay.
So the first one is, is to dissolve the commission. And this, we can do it in two votes if you like.
No, that, that.
So, so replace it with a subcommittee.
So now we have a motion, okay, on table now. So a motion has been made by Vice Mayor Menchaca and the second by Councilmember Harrington. So now please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of three, two for option one and two.
The next item is public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? If so, please hand over your speaker request card. Mayor, it doesn't look like we have any speakers tonight.
So now then, then move to city manager's report, please. Okay. Okay, so then council comments in conference meeting report, please. Who wanted to go first? Yes, Councilmember Harrington.
No reports, but I am looking forward to seeing each of you at the League of Cities. I think that'll be a very good conference to attend. Also looking forward to the upcoming farmer's market.
Farmer's market.
Hit that.
It's on twenty seven April. What time?
Thirty AM to one thirty PM.
Awesome.
And then we have the mission to mission the next day.
Mission to mission. Wow, that's a lot of exercise, huh? Okay, then who will be the next? Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, okay. So it's last Saturday, I have chance go to the, the here, hero Christian Center, the pre walk song. And it's a really good event and they walk on the whole, our, not the whole, it's, it's around the our police department and, and our library and back to their office. And they set up the four station. They pray, pray for the, for the United States, pray for the war. And finally, they pray for our city of San Gabriel. So I really appreciate the, they are, every year they do this kind of really meaningful the event. It's help our community to really, also it's good for our inclusive, multicultural. We want to love and we don't want to hate. Okay. And then maybe like we, I really appreciate, I saw the, it's, it's April twenty seven, right? For the, our.
Farmer's market.
I, I, I really expecting that one, two. And yeah, and yeah, that's it. Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ding. And Councilmember Chan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real brief, on April ninth, I attended the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce Tasty Tuesday Networking Lunch at our very own Clearman's Galley, The Boat. It was a good event and got to network with some good people. And I too am looking forward to our, our farmer's market and it should be a fun event. Thank you.
Awesome. And how about Vice Mayor?
Yeah, real, real briefly, a couple things. Number one, I was, went on a mosquito control ride along. And so just to look at what the, the staff does at the agency. We actually went to the, to the San Gabriel Valley Mountains. We went to some adjacent cities to look at the drainage and some of the issues that are taking place. And so what we suggested, those of, the, the two of us who went there, we really encourage staff at the agency to communicate with our public works department because they literally have a list of all the, the areas that they have to check on a regular basis because they're not, they don't have the proper drainage, they have to go through treatment. And, you know, public works needs to know. We as council, you know, could help in prioritizing if, when public works brings their plan to us. But I think it's just so important because it's, it's going to get worse before it gets better. And so they've identified sites already, those are the ones that really need to be, you know, remedied. And the agency doesn't have the level staffing to cover the whole San Gabriel Valley, but they have that list and then they know where it's a problem. So, so it was actually very interesting. And anyway, so that's all I had for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And on April eleventh, that we, thank you Vice Mayor Menchaca and Councilmember Ding, that we held a signing ceremony in this city council chamber that I signed a letter in ten with the Taiwan Tourism Administration through which the city of San Gabriel will receive lanterns showcased at the Taiwan's annual lantern festival for free. That I have worked with a friend that who I know for decades that now is serving as the Deputy Director General in Taiwan Tourism Administration. So after several months of collaborations, I'm pleased that we have conclude an agreement to receive these lanterns at no cost, that they will cover the shipping expenses and will send the lantern designer from Taiwan to San Gabriel for assembly of the lanterns, ensuring no, ensuring no financial impact on our city. Over the next ten years that we expect to receive new lanterns annually, the goals of this agreement is to enhance our city's lantern festival, making it a notable event in Southern California and attracting more tourists to stay and shop in our city. On April first, the city of San Gabriel began offering a free haircut service. The salon is, name is Last Hair. It's co-owned by Chinese-American and Korean-American entrepreneurs. Then I got there, that is the place where I get my haircut there is almost every month, but would like to express my gratitude for their generosity in providing free haircuts to our senior citizens. I was there on the first day speaking with those who registered for the service. They were pleased with the new offering from the city. And I feel fortunate that to have been able to expand this service to our senior residents. We now provide free haircuts once a month. And I would like to thank Rebecca for coordinating everything at the community center. On April tenth, I attended my first board meeting of the Los Angeles County Sanitation District meeting. At the meeting that I received the annual report from L A C S D, an entity responsible for managing wastewater, solid waste, green energy and more for our community. So that's conclude my report. Then the next one will be a closed section, we have none. And the next regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty PM. Meeting adjourned at nine fifty-seven PM. Thank you.